I could go ahead and call our meeting to order, please. If we could all please stand for a moment of silence, and then we'll ask Councilmember Lesby to lead us on the pledge.
... The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Shall we call a roll, please?
Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mrs. Butcher-Cromley?
Here.
Mrs. Senior Erdley?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mrs. Tinglestein?
Here.
Mrs. Chackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Thank you. Each of the councilmembers in your packet should have a copy of the minutes from our last regularly scheduled meeting of March the 27th. If you'd like to take a moment to look those over for any possible corrections or additions.
I make a motion to accept.
Thank you. Motion's been made?
Seconded.
And seconded. If there are no corrections, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Also, in your packet, each councilmember should have received a copy of our latest check register. If you could indicate if you received that register. Thank you. We're at the portion of our meeting where we take public comments from the audience. Just for clarity, on the front end of the meeting tonight, we have specifically invited, by letter, a number of residents from Derby Estates to be here to address some of the concerns about flooding and stormwater issues that they have. That is on your agenda as a separate line item. So, when we have public comments, if we could hold those comments to issues other than Derby Estates, and then on the agenda immediately after those public comments will be a discussion about Derby Estates. So, there'll be plenty of time for both those interested in public comment to speak, and then our guests that we've invited from Derby Estates will have their time as well. So, I'm gonna go through the list and just call these in the order that people signed up, and if the issue that you're interested in happens to be on Derby Estate stormwater, then if you won't mind, just hold it until after we complete the public comments. So, I would start with Ms. Amy Cloud.
Tracy has my paperwork for the 4th of July post-parade party. This'll be our fourth year of holding this event. We have it down on Water Street in front of the Arts and Cultural Center. So, I just need approval for the street to be closed, and I guess Public Works puts out the sawhorses to block the traffic, so I really need... Do I need to call them ahead of time to make sure they do that?
We'll take care of it for you.
Okay, 'cause we need to just make sure they're there, and then the police department will reroute traffic for us, or how do we get that done? We had a little problem with that last year, and I guess there was a follow-up meeting.
Yes, ma'am. At the beginning of your event last year, I don't think we had all the control we needed in the area before the crowd showed up, so I think we will respond a little more quickly this year, as the crowd shifts from the parade route down to this location.
Yeah, plus I had to drag one of the sawhorse things from the barricades from across the street on Main Street over to our side of the street, 'cause we didn't have one there, which, you know, I have plenty of volunteers, we can do it, but...
We'll try not to make you do that this year.
It's such a nice little event. You are... All are certainly welcome. The American Legion will be there again. They loved cooking the hot dogs for us, and Quest Farm will be there handing out water, and Kentuckians for the Commonwealth will come and do popcorn, and probably still working on some other groups to come and do ice cream or whatever else, and we're gonna do big bike decorating events with police safety, and working on trying to give some bikes away over at the Health Department. So, it's... 'Cause we wanna have bikes in the parade, so any of you that have bicycles and you want to ride in the parade with children or grandchildren or nieces or nephews, please join us. It's just a nice opportunity to have, you know, to make it more of an old-fashioned parade.
Yeah.
And then just come on down to the Arts and Cultural Center and see the art, and join Mayor Prather in being a taster. You will be a taster again, a judge, right?
That pie-judging contest is the highlight of the 4th of July.
Absolutely. Well, you'll... You're gonna love it this year, because we have... I've asked Tim Thompson if the fire department will defend their title against the police department, and Chief Bossy was all for that, too. So, we'll have the police and the fire department going off against each other with pies.
Who you gonna make mad, Mayor?
There's no win there.
This sounds fun.
Pardon me?
I said, "That sounds fun."
Yeah, it should be fun. Every year, this is our fourth year. Every year it gets bigger. I expect the crowd'll be around 300 or more this year, 'cause it's grown every year a little bit, so it should be good.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion's been made?
I'll second.
And seconded. And if there are no further questions for Amy, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We look forward to joining you. Thank you. Well, close on Amy's heels would be Ms. Laurie Saunders to talk about some other community activities.
Amy did a nice segue for me.
She did.
'Cause now that you all've got your bicycles ready, I need you to come and roll on two of my events that we're hosting. One is Horsey Hundred, which of course is Memorial Weekend, Saturday, May 27th, and Sunday, May 28th. The event is hosted at Georgetown College, and most of the activities are surrounded around the campus. However, the cyclists will be traveling through town in multiple directions, both ways, and the Horsey Hundred Committee has been coordinating with law enforcement, along with the fire department and EMS, too. And I think Chief Bossy, if you wanna say anything about Horsey Hundred, since you've been working with them and how traffic is gonna flow and things?
We try to have the racers or the riders go out to have the lowest impact on traffic as we can. Of course, we're in the backup, so our guys will be in Woodford County and Bourbon County and stuff like that, and we've met with Frankford, Franklin County, and the horsey people have been great about... The Horsey Hundred people have been great about keeping us informed about their... It's a really well-organized event, so I think it'll have as low an impact as we can have. We understand the education piece that we have to do to, you know, remind our citizens that there'll be a lot of bikes, and so it will slow traffic down, so we're also on board with that.
Good. And Chief, I think this is around, like Laurie, last year, 23 to 2500 cyclists.
And you're ahead of their numbers as of today, as to what they were last year for my experience.
From 30-plus states and almost 1,000 volunteers, and this is a big event for Scott County.
This wouldn't be happening the same day graduation again this year, is it?
Yes, sir, it is. And one of the things that we are going to do is we've worked with the school board and Dr. Hub in requesting that when they send out their emails to parents of graduating students, that they put in there, just to make it a little safer day for everyone to take the interstate. We'll also be including that in our press releases, and we'll be doing some social media to that effect, too. And I know the police department is prepared to put out some social media also in that regards. Just encouraging everybody to take the interstate instead of the country road, so everybody will have a less stressful day.
Laurie?
And just so... I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna ask you a quick question on... This is very interesting information.
Yes.
But one of the statistics I kinda questioned, I feel like it might be higher than what they're actually reporting in here. It says the... An average of 633 hotel rooms were occupied in Scott County during that two-day event. And I remember seeing in years past some occupancy reports from hotels that were already at or above that. So, wouldn't you think that the 60% is low, or...
That is based on the numbers when they come in, but you also gotta take in consideration they're also using Georgetown College's dorm rooms, too. So, several stay at the dorm rooms, and what we're seeing right now is our hotels are pretty full, because we've got a lot of people visiting us.
That's kinda what I'm getting at. The occupancy rate's not 60% for the hotels. It could be 90 to 100%.
That's what I thought. Yes.
Right.
In general, but for the Horsey Hundred staying there, 60% of the occupants that are filling our hotels is 60%. The other 40% would probably... Is our other visitors.
I've got it now.
Memorial Weekend, graduation. And now the Ark is filling us up pretty good.
Good.
But yes, I did... We had put out a press release with our economic impact study that was done by Jason Swanson at UK. And just in case you all just missed it, and it was limited numbers, this is the full report that I think you all will find very interesting, that over one weekend, over $623,000 are put in our community. Pretty amazing. That's... You want me to do all three, and then approve them all at once, or you want me to do separate?
Well...
We're not gonna probably disapprove any of them.
We're probably not gonna disapprove, so why don't you roll on?
Okay.
Please.
The next one is the community bike roll, which is something new that we're trying. We're encouraging people to come out and enjoy bicycling with us during Memorial Weekend. It will be Saturday, May 27th. The activities will begin at 10 o'clock on Saturday morning, where we'll have some fun activities for kids. We'll also have somebody talking about bicycle safety, face painting, photo booth, fun things, and then at 11 o'clock, we will ride. We are asking permission to use the medium route with a slight modification, and that would be that we would begin at Giddings Circle, where the start and finish line actually is to Horsey Hundred. Then we would go on to the medium route from there. We have talked to Chief Bossy and Sergeant Allgood about that. We don't think... We were thinking we would use the leapfrog approach, but after further discussions, we may need to do some street closures because of small children, and we will work where Chief Bossy goes. I told him, I said, "Stay by my side like glue." In case I mess up.
We'll use the old 5K route, and we'll block off... Use the same traffic plan that we use for that event, so I think we have to do that, especially if we're talking about little people riding.
Laurie, just please make sure that you coordinate with Georgetown College if we're gonna use Memorial Drive in any way.
We have already talked base... Touched base with them. Pam Thomas, who is organizing this from the Horsey Hundred side, has already spoke to the college, and they have agreed that we could use Giddings Circle for the ride that morning. That'll begin at 11:00, and at 12:00, we should be finished up, and then we'll be giving away some bicycles, and we'll also be giving away some helmets. We are really hoping that you are going to lead us this year. Three miles, that's all you gotta do. Chief Bossy's has already got you a bicycle.
Oh, thank you, Chief.
We've already made that arrangement for you.
I appreciate your help.
I've got a new one on order.
I'll be videoing that.
Mofa, Mayor.
Mofa, there he's going.
And we would love for you all to join him, too, everyone who's got a bicycle to come out. But we think this'll be a great way to show our support for Horsey Hundred and encourage a healthy lifestyle, and also learn about riding a bicycle and all the safety that comes with it, keeping that helmet on. I feel like that's very important, too. Ready for the next one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the next one is the Summer Concert Series. So, it will begin Memorial Weekend. That will be the kickoff to coincide with the Horsey Hundred. One of the things that we're doing, we're asking to do a little bit differently, but it doesn't affect the Horsey Hundred. We're asking for permission to close Main Street from Hamilton, from Hamilton to Broadway at 5:00 PM due to the high volume of attendance for Court Square. We wanna move the food trucks out onto Main Street, because it's so packed in there with the Horsey Hundred participants and with our locals who come to, and our visitors who are staying in our hotels who come out for the evenings. The other option would be to close at the crosswalk from the Old Galvins to right across there is Doug Smith, Brooklyn. And that would help us out a lot, if we could just close there at 5:00 on, and then if deemed appropriate, we could close at 6:00 all the way to Hamilton. We just feel like that is probably going to come up. On the other dates, on June 24th, the 29th, July 29th, and August 26th, we're asking for the same thing, to close at the crosswalk at 5:00 PM, and then unless deemed necessary by the police for safety concerns, we would not close Hamilton at 6:00 like we did last year. We had several occasions that we had to close off at Hamilton, just because of the high volume of people who are attending the concert series. So, we're trying to make accommodations for the visitors and our locals, so they will keep coming back by giving more space to them, so...
Laurie, if... How early would you have to close the street if you pulled the bandstand out at the bottom of the... Or in front of the courthouse, instead of in the courthouse square?
I could probably... I'd probably have to do by 2:00, 'cause the bands generally come in between right around 3:00, but in order to get the cars out of the way, so if you did from the crosswalk down, we'd have to close that at 2:00, because it takes us about 30 to 45 minutes to get all the cars out. Then Public Works always helps us out by bringing in the stage and dropping it, and then the band rolls in, and it takes them right up to that time to get it unloaded, do their sound checks, and ready to start playing at 7:00.
Is Saturday...
We would love to do that, because of the sound reverberating.
It's so much better, and the crowd setup is so much better than to push it all into this. Is Saturday big enough that you need it to be out in this first Saturday with the Horsey 100? Is it big enough that it needs to be out in the street instead of in the court?
It probably would be beneficial. It would probably be a huge help, but we don't wanna put any pressure on the merchants for having the street closed down in front of their shops. And we had reached out to them and asked... We didn't ask about closing at 2:00. We had asked them about, "Are you comfortable if we close at 5:00 at the crosswalk, and then specific times like Horsey Hundred going ahead and closing Hamilton at 5:00, and for the Finley 5K at 5:00 PM on Hamilton, just because we know those two are huge?" And they all agreed. You know, we had asked them about other locations. Would they prefer us to move to Royal Spring Park? Would they like for us to move behind City Hall? Trying to make it easy on all of them, and us, too. No... There wasn't anyone who particularly wanted us to move behind City Hall. They really wanted us to stay up in the main area where you have to walk past their shop to get to the concert series. So, we tried to come up with the best solution for them and for us without adding any pressure to them and the parking.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Did I make that confusing enough?
We... This has worked well for the last couple of years, where we anticipate the crowd as best we can, but we give that decision to the police department about when it's best for public safety to extend it. And that seems to work for both our guests and the police department, and it's the best accommodation we can make for the merchants down on Main Street that would be affected otherwise.
Need a motion, Mayor?
For all three?
For all three.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions for Laurie on any of the three events? And, you know, the crowd issue at the Horsey 100 event and the Finley 5K event, these are community success problems.
Yes.
That as our citizens continue to respond and turn out for events, that we grow, and we'll continue to experiment with what works best for the merchants and public safety.
And if this doesn't work, I'll come back and we'll try something differently.
I'm confident of that. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
One more thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, two things. One, I wanted to say, you know, we could not do all the things we do without your all's support. We could not do it without Chief Bossy's, and also Public Works, which... Happy birthday, Chief Bryan.
Did he sneak one by us?
Yes. So, I'm gonna bring it to your attention. But anyway, couldn't do it without all of their support and help, and we so appreciate all you do for us. Which leads me to, I just wanted to let you know, we did a 2016 annual report of downtown. We've left a copy for you all to review and look at. If you've got any questions, feel free to reach out, call us. Be happy to answer them, or have a one-on-one meeting with you if you want us to, but thank you again. Appreciate it.
Who took your photo?
Great picture.
You know, we did the photo?
That's a famous photo.
It is. It is an Australian fellow who works out at Toyota, and we have bought the rights to it, so we've used it.
We have to pay for the bikes.
Yes. We just don't steal people's pictures. We actually reached out to him, and...
We weren't accused of stealing, and we just thought how beautiful it was.
He was happy to have us use it, so it is a beautiful picture of our downtown.
Thank you, Laurie. Good job.
The info... Or the information that Laurie provided you, particularly on the downtown activities, of course, this is where we asked tourism to step in and help us with the former Main Street program activities. And Ms. Erdley and Mr. Bradley have served on a committee to work on that transition. We met with Laurie and her board numerous times, and I think this annual report of what tourism has done for the benefit of our downtown community is a really important document. Chuck and Polly and I had had a chance to see the economic impact of the Horsey 100, and then this will give you, I think, a lot of confidence about the way tourism is promoting your downtown. Thank you. Next on the sheet, Mr. Todd Stone.
Good evening. I'm Todd Stone. I'm Assistant Director of Campus Safety at Georgetown College. On May 13th, here at 10:00 AM, we're having our spring graduation, and we are looking to close Memorial Drive and College Street. Memorial Drive starting at 8:00 AM till 1:00 PM, and College Street from 9:30 AM until 1:00 PM, utilizing barricade and police officers for traffic control. One thing that I did put on the application was that if it rains, we wouldn't need this, but after we've had a meeting since I submitted that application, that they do now wanna keep that street closed for that time regardless, rain or shine.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions for Todd? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank y'all very much.
Thanks, and I think the rain's cooperated with you for a couple of years, hasn't it?
It didn't last year. It drained us out last year, but that's okay. We just... If it rains, we move them into the gym, and parents can go into the chapel and view it in there, so it's a little bit of a headache, but not bad.
Good luck.
Thank y'all much.
Thank you. Next on the sheet is Reagan Lookadoo.
I am Reagan Lookadoo. I'm a professor of psychology at Georgetown College. I'm also a resident of Georgetown and have been for the past 15 years. I realize the council voted to table discussions to the fairness ordinance at your last meeting, but it is my hope that you will deeply consider bringing this discussion back up, as it is such an important issue, not only to the students that I teach, but also to our community that I live in. In the meantime, I do wanna offer these remarks. These remarks are a statement that my colleague, Dr. Jennifer Price, prepared. She was unable to be here tonight. She, too, is a professor of psychology at Georgetown College and a resident of Georgetown. Though these are her remarks, I certainly support them. The Georgetown City Council recently heard public comment in their consideration of a citywide fairness ordinance, which would protect members of the LGBT community from discrimination in employment, housing, and public accommodations. As a psychologist and a resident of Georgetown, I feel it is important for the city council to consider scientific evidence, which offers overwhelming support for fairness policies. The American Psychological Association is the largest scientific and professional organization representing psychology in the United States. In 2004, the APA issued a statement to the judgment... Excuse me, to the Commission on Human Rights, stating that both psychological research and professional judgment indicate that there is no justification for denying same-sex-oriented men and women their human rights and freedoms. In 2008, the APA issued a statement stating that it supports the passages of laws and policies protecting the rights, legal benefits, and privileges of all gender identities and expressions, going on to specify its support for full access to employment, housing, and education. Decades of research and clinical experience has demonstrating... Demonstrated that an individual's sexual orientation and gender identity are heavily influenced by biological factors. And while environmental factors can play a role, most people experience little to no choice in their sexual orientation and gender identity. Science tells us there is no inherent relationship between sexual and gender minority status and mental illness. Rather, the high rates of depression, anxiety, and suicidal thinking in the LGBT community seems to be heavily influenced by the prejudice and discrimination they face in our society. Although many individuals have learned to cope with the social stigma and lead very successful lives in Georgetown, the fact of the matter is that fear of discrimination lives in the background and was brought to the forefront at the most recent city council meeting, when it became clear that there are people in this community who don't support LGBT-inclusive nondiscrimination policies. Research tells us that having a fairness ordinance makes a difference. In 2010, a study reported in the Sexuality Research and Social Policy Journal, and the authors reported that individuals living in communities with nondiscrimination policies are less stressed, receive greater social support, and in general, experience more positive messages and fewer negative messages from their environment. A 2013 study from Psychology, Public, Policy, and Law showed that in communities with nondiscrimination policies, people have greater awareness and support of these laws, and LGBT job applicants experience less interpersonal discrimination. A review of multiple studies, which was published in 2016, concluded that legislation effectively reduces discrimination. From a psychological science perspective, this matter is settled. Fairness ordinances are needed, and they work. It is the Georgetown City's Council's responsibility to enact policies that are best for our community, and I certainly hope that you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ray Sexton?
Good evening, Mayor Prather, councilmembers. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Raymond Sexton. I'm the Executive Director of the Lexington Human Rights Commission. I'm also a resident of Georgetown, and being with the commission for 20 years, I've probably half a dozen times have appeared before the Lexington Commission... Or, I'm sorry, the Lexington City Council, so this is my first time before the Georgetown City Council, so I appreciate the opportunity. But I've been called a lot of things in my life, and I've recently been called an expert, so I'm here to provide some expert testimony on the fairness ordinance. As you know, or may not know, the Lexington City Council passed a fairness ordinance in July 8th of 1999, and it has been the role of the Lexington Human Rights Commission to enforce our local ordinances, as well as federal law regarding anti-discrimination. As far as the background of the Lexington fairness, I was with the commission for two years when Lexington passed theirs, and to be honest, back then, as a new investigator, I did not really see the need for a fairness ordinance. I thought, you know, what we have on the books is enough to help people in the areas of employment, housing, and public accommodation. After 20 years of being an investigator and being the Director of the Human Rights Commission, we see day in and day out the need for such laws here at the local level, due to the fact there's no... Currently, no state or federal provision for discrimination, anti-discrimination on sexual orientation and gender identity. It's my understanding that the law's been tabled here in Georgetown, and I think you at least owe it to the residents to even... To explore the opportunity, to explore the issue. I understand there's not even been a draft of the ordinance. Many of the myths and the fears that go into people when they think about a fairness ordinance, when you go into writing... when you go into writing the law, a lot of that, the language of the law, addresses many of the issues that people seem to have when it comes to not wanting these ordinances. For example, people think, for example, in the Lexington law, sexual orientation is defined as an individual's actual or imputed homosexuality. Much like we get a lot of calls all the time, okay, I want to file a complaint because of my race, but I'm white, and I know you guys don't help white people, you only have, you'd only help black people. And that's not the case. The sexual orientation issue works both ways. For example, let's say you have an individual who is maybe an effeminate, not very good with the ladies. He may, he may dress a little preppy, and he's on his job, and he may be an individual that does not identify as a homosexual. But people spread rumors, some adverse actions are taken on the job. He may make, like I said, he might not fit the definition of homosexuality, but that ordinance exists to protect people on both sides of the issue. As far as the number of employees, our local law exists to, businesses that have eight employees or more are covered. There is exemptions for employers that have less than eight employees. The timelines go back one hundred and eighty days. For example, if you passed the ordinance here, that wouldn't open the floodgates, and individuals who have been discriminated against from years past can come forward and file complaints. They can only go back one hundred and eighty days. The Lexington ordinance specifically spells out things that employers can do. For example, nothing in this section shall prevent an employer from, number one, enforcing an employee dress policy, which may include restricting employees from dress associated with the other gender, or designating appropriate gender-specific restroom or shower facilities. There's also a section, I know the religious issue always comes up in the local ordinance. In Lexington, the provisions of this section shall not apply to a religious institution or to an organization operated for charitable or educational purposes, which is supervised by a religious corporation. The fact is, you know, people will say, why should this, why should this issue come up on their job or in housing? The fact is, doing this for over twenty years, sex and sexual orientation discussions occur frequently in the workplace and in the housing industry. Stereotypes about gays and lesbians should not be used as part of the decision-making process for employment or housing. The number of actual cases filed are minimal compared to the other protected classes. However, we attribute this to shows that once these laws are passed locally, employers, housing providers become more tolerant and accepting once these, once these local laws are passed. And in general, you know, the issue's been tabled, I understand, but I think in this day and age, you should at least give our residents of this town an opportunity to be heard and come up with a plan for drafting this ordinance, and at least give a discussion and give it a vote, so.
Mr. Sexton?
Yes ma'am.
I'd like to explain a few things, if that's okay?
Sure.
I think it was, came out in the paper that we did not want any more information. And I just wanted to let you know, we probably had more information about this than any other legislation we've had.
Okay.
We had fairness ordinances from six other cities.
All right.
Which were Covington, Danville, Frankfurt, Lexington, Louisville, and Midway. We actually were given eight other documents, some which were hands-on originals, lawsuits to look over. I received two packets myself from the fairness committee. One that actually had amending the human rights ordinances to include fairness protection, and also a model human rights ordinance. So I don't think a lot of people are aware of the volume of information we did receive.
Okay.
So I just wanted to explain that to you. And we also got the, you know, the online fairness ordinance thing as well. So we did have some questions about that.
Sure.
I just wanted to let, you know, we really did get everything. Our attorney gave a wonderful two-page summary to us. And being on the council, this is my second term, and I've worked with everybody, it's a great group. And I can tell you, this group does their homework. They do their homework, they're very thorough. So I just wanted to let you know that we have looked into it, and I appreciate you all coming, but we also listened to three different meetings about it, and this is the fourth. And we're always open to information.
Sure.
But I just want to make sure you know what information we have been given.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
But thank you for coming and explaining everything. And I think you go to church with my brother, so.
Oh yeah?
John Sanger.
Oh yeah.
Baptist Church, so yeah.
Absolutely.
But thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate you coming.
Any other good things?
Thank you, Ms. Sexton. Next on the sign-in sheet is Millie Conway.
Vice Tilford reached out to me today about the renovations of Ed Davis, the concession stands and adding the two bathrooms. And he just wanted me to explain that the work needed to be done by June the fifth because the games will start June the eleventh. And he wanted that last week after June the fifth to clean up. So he had talked to Willie Gossi, and he asked me, he couldn't come tonight, but he asked me to bring it up. So, that's all.
Thank you.
Where are we with those bathrooms?
Underway.
Underway, as in what?
Park and Rec, are they taking, taking charge of it, aren't they? Getting the bids and stuff.
We've met onsite with a group from Ed Davis, and eyeballed it, talked through the details of the project. And it is being drawn and bid.
We received the bid specs Friday from Cherry. The city will issue those bids as soon as we can get it put into our form. So hopefully by the end of the week, the bid should go out.
They're anticipating having all this done before their deadline of June the fifth, on my understanding. If the bid comes through within reason and...
Absolutely.
So that, you know, that's not, I don't think that's really a big concern, but it is, it is a concern for Vice now, but I think we would anticipate getting this done before.
Yes, and that's been our hard commitment. And it's the hard commitment we made out there onsite.
Right.
He did, he did say that if it couldn't be done by the fifth, that possibly that should just wait until the fall, is what he told me. But I know they'd like to have it done by the fifth.
I think, I think our commitment remains unchanged. That we would have bathrooms in time for the summer.
That's what I told him, but he asked me to bring it up, and I said I would.
Thank you. Thank you. Next on the public comment sheet is Mr. Steven Price.
I'm Steven Price, I live at one-six-seven Rucker Avenue in Georgetown. As you know Mayor Prather, I've worked to try to avoid any expansion of the landfill that was proposed. I'm continuing that work. As you may know, the landfill is applying for renewal on their state permit. And I've written a letter to the News Graphic, I hope Mr. Skogren will publish it this week. And I want to read to you a letter that I've written you. Unfortunately, I didn't have time to make copies, but I will make copies tomorrow and get copies to each of you. This is to Mayor Prather, to Attorney Hartley, to the Georgetown Council. Sirs and Dons, I tender here with a copy of notice of a violation delivered to me by your code enforcement office on Friday past. Because of my several efforts to assist you with your interests regarding the local landfill, public schools, and specifically the school tax proposal, reforestation and its flood mitigating benefits. You may recall, Mayor Prather, my letters in that regard, and community gardening. I founded the community garden program here in Scott County in two thousand and two. And Councilwoman Conway, I've been trying to call you for the past month since we talked after the, at the two council meetings ago about new land, new community garden sites. And I've been talking with rental property owners, Lynn Foley specifically, about opening areas within her apartment complex that are now in grass, opening those areas for the tenants to cultivate garden crops. And so, and so between all this, this work I have been doing for the community, or because of all this work I've been doing for the community, I have admittedly, let me go back to, I have admittedly neglected upkeep of my home. Such neglect has caused your code office to advise me, to so advise me. Because of my public service and your interests, I ask you to cause your code office to allow me more time than the current allowance of five days to comply with its demands for remedy. And I want to say that we have statutes, Kentucky statutes, that favor horticulturists like me with exemptions from code enforcement. And I refer to KRS one-ninety-eight B point zero-six-zero, item three. I refer to KRS four-thirteen point zero-seven-two, both of which exempt horticulturists from building codes and property maintenance codes. And so I've written you a second letter. And, let's see here, Mayor Tom Prather, Attorney Hartley, and Georgetown Council. I tender here with a copy of KRS one-ninety-eight B point zero-six-zero, item three, which authorizes urban county governments in Kentucky to determine service districts within their boundaries within which farm dwellings and other farm buildings shall be exempt from the requirements of the Uniform State Building Code. Because of the several inter-local agreements by which Georgetown and Scott County operate jointly, Georgetown-Scott County is de facto governed on an urban county basis. You then, with approval of Scott Fiscal Court, might be authorized to so determine a service district, a service area, you know, a service district which would include my horticulture site. And the letter goes on to explain why horticulture warrants exemptions, and explains why such exemptions would benefit the community by incentivizing all persons in the community to engage in the healthiest work there is, horticulture, and produce the healthiest crops locally which they could then market to you. So, I don't have copies of these letters, but I wanted to take this occasion to come before you and tell you my concern. I think the law allows me certain exemptions because of my willingness to raise crops. And I think because of my willingness to engage the community in horticulture, which has demanded a lot of my time, that your code office, let me say this too, that the practice of horticulture requires materials and equipment. And the appearance of any farm or horticultural property is going to be different to that of people who sit indoors all the time. And those people who sit indoors are the ones who complain about the fact that I raise crops and that my property looks different from theirs. I admit it looks different, I'm exempted, and I think you should grant me more time than the five days that Dusty Carter allowed me to comply with his demands. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. That completes the public comments portion of our agenda, and we'd now like to begin the discussion of Derby Estates' stormwater concerns. So that we can have the most information possible for the residents that are here of Derby Estates tonight, we've asked two different engineering companies to be present to talk with you and to talk with the council. We have our consulting engineers that work on our overall stormwater plan, which is strand engineering. And they help us look at the broader issues of watershed management and the larger-scale issues of stormwater management. We have a separate engineering company that's with us here tonight that has done the very focused and specific work on the improvement that you're asking the council to address in Derby Estates out of Tim Tam. So what we'd like to do is give you two brief presentations by our consulting engineers. One will be a broader picture of our stormwater concerns, and then we'll ask the other firm to focus in more specifically on the problem that exists today, Judy, and what the engineering solutions might be for that. And at that point, we still want to hear from you neighbors, but we thought it most fair to you to give you as much information as we could and then let you comment for the council. And if you all are okay with that, we'd like to proceed in that way. Thank you. Go to the PowerPoint on the bottom. And Judy, this will be a lot of information, but I think it's the type of information that the council needs to make a decision and let you all respond to specific information.
Thank you Mayor, Council. Tonight we have, we're starting off with Strand Associates. We thought this was a good opportunity to give you a little overview on our entire program before we dive into a little more detail on the Derby Estates. What we have, we have Strand Associates, we have Mike Woolham and Lindsay Nicholas are here to get us started. They're going to kind of start off on an overview of what we've been doing with our master plan and how we're prioritizing different watersheds with different strategies on how to attack stormwater as a whole in Georgetown. Mike?
Mayor, thank you. Members of the council and the public are pleased to be here today to talk a little bit about stormwater and kind of what we've been involved with over the last year or so on behalf of the city on many, many stormwater program fronts. And I want to try to give a brief overview of that activity here today. Items that I'm going to be discussing here, these, just kind of a listing, kind of an overview of the stormwater master planning process that we've been undertaking. It's a very comprehensive effort, Mayor, as you alluded to, actually looking at all the watersheds throughout the community, some of which extend out into the county areas just by virtue of the topography and the way things lay out with the urban service boundary. Part of the purpose of that is trying to identify known problem areas that frankly would help identify potential projects that might fall out in need of supporting some of the problems that have been experienced throughout the community, much like Derby Estates as an example. The master planning process has also helped identify some action items. And I'm just going to give a brief overview of what some of those action items are and kind of how that helps form the basis for steps moving forward from the community standpoint, because the master plan is basically a roadmap for that purpose. We'll also talk about the asset management program. Just here within the last, I think, month and a half or so, the council approved an authorization of funding for an initial pilot project to start looking at some of the infrastructure issues that have been identified in part by the city's efforts in kind of doing background reviews on some of the problem areas, and then some of the feedback that we've actually received through some of the neighborhood meetings, public meetings rather, that we've had. Also talk about the recent BMP manual update that was rolled out back in February, and then some future considerations. So first, the, kind of the master plan overview. What you see here in this particular slide is kind of a four-phase process that really defines the master planning process that we've been involved with. This started back, back in early two thousand sixteen, phase one, which basically was an introduction and background effort. And part of that was, that effort was applied, was trying to establish what goals and objectives that we would have as a part of this master planning process. And we'll talk a little bit about stakeholder group momentarily, but part of the determination of goals and objectives frankly was informed by the involvement and participation of community stakeholders that were identified to participate in that process. And so, so that was, that was a big part of determining the guide that basically helped us understand how we needed to move forward as your consultant on the project. Phase two, which we just recently wrapped up, was the community-wide stormwater analysis. Phase two, which we just recently wrapped up, was the community-wide stormwater analysis. And that basically involved kind of some deeper dives into some of the watersheds, some of the issues and problem areas, and then also outreach with the public. There were a number of public meetings that were held on a watershed basis where we invited the public to come out and kind of share their concerns, and we had some good dialogue with folks that had some real serious problems based on their particular neighborhood or their home and some of the issues that they were experiencing. And so we were able to use that as a foundation for some of the work going forward. And that portion of the master plan was just recently concluded. And so our next step, which we are getting ready to advance here in the coming months, is actually moving into what I would call more of a technical evaluation phase. And part of that means maybe looking at an individual watershed that we might want to focus early efforts on and doing more detailed evaluations of problem areas and potentially development of solutions to mitigate some of the problems that we might, that we've uncovered through the reviews that we've conducted thus far. And then finally, phase four, that's a little farther out on the horizon, and that involves an implementation approach. How do improvements or solutions to these problems, how are they implemented? Is there, you know, what mechanism is that, is that facilitates that? And obviously, that has to be informed by things like cost. You know, what are the costs? What are the needs and the priorities from a community standpoint? And so this is kind of an evolving process, and all of these kinds of future steps are certainly, they need to be informed by your all's input and the input that we've been given through staff and through some of the stakeholder participation. And that's a great segue into the next slide, which is the stakeholder group. And I have to say that we've had a very good engagement process with the stakeholders. And you see here a list of various folks that have been involved in the process. It's certainly been founded with some of the staff that have participated directly with us, and Kyle's been great in helping lead that effort from the city engineer's office, working with planning and zoning, and then a lot of people out in the private sector from some of the very important businesses and industries in the community who are very interested in this. You know, for example, Representative Toyota has been very active in the process, working with environmental advocacy groups, working with state and local government officials, others like that that have helped inform the process, and even having involvement of folks from University of Kentucky who have a vested interest in what's going on in the Kane Run watershed, since obviously Kane Run is very important to the city, the least of which is the Royal Spring because of the aquifer. And certainly, water is a very important facet to this community on many levels, drinking water being one, but also the asset that you have in water as you think about the importance of North Elkhorn and some of the, what I call the blue ribbon that runs through the center of town. And so altogether, we've probably had 20 folks from the community that have been actively involved in this process and informing our approach. One of the first things that we did with our stakeholder group is that we asked them to, you know, tell us what was most important from their point of view on stormwater, stormwater concerns, issues, things that we needed to be alert to. And so this graphic here highlights some of the feedback that we received from those folks. And I'm not going to read all of these, but just to pick out a few, stormwater should follow a comprehensive plan for growth and development. So obviously, there's a recognition that as you have growth and development, there are outcomes associated with that. And so being mindful of that as you look at future growth and development considerations, you've got regulations in place that basically address that, and some of those regulations were recently updated. Another one was manages runoff from streets and agricultural areas. You know, so obviously, there's a concern because there's a lot of ag area in the USB. And when I say USB, I use an acronym that stands for Urban Service Boundary. And so there's a lot of undeveloped land that currently exists inside the existing urban service boundary that, as that land develops, it runs off into the existing streams that basically cross throughout the city. So they were very informed and targeted in a lot of their feedback on things that we needed to consider in our approach for this master plan. So that led us to the next phase of our process was to basically develop what our goals and strategies were. You know, you start in a planning process, and you know, we don't like to do something in a vacuum. You know, we like to have feedback and input that basically helps inform the process. So we work with the stakeholder group to identify certain goals that we needed, that we needed to kind of hold high in regard in terms of how we wanted to approach the master planning process. And on the horizontal axis, kind of at the top of the chart there, we came up with six goals. We had it open because we didn't want to just limit it to six, but we ended up with six goals, primary goals that were identified as part of the process, from reducing stormwater threats to the public, all the way to potentially identifying financing opportunities to support the stormwater staff. You know, right now, you've got an active stormwater group within the city that, and I don't know if they've been, they've not been formally identified, they're working under the city engineer's office, but they're responsible for certain activities that are specifically stormwater-related in responding to state and federal permit requirements for the MS4 program. And so those were some of the goals that we came up with. And then the goals basically led to identification of certain strategies, kind of like a strategic plan, if you will, that basically were defined to help fulfill the goals. And if you look on the vertical axis, some of the strategies that we had, number one, for example, was prepare watershed studies. I mean, that's the foundation, if you think about it, a watershed study is the foundation for really for evaluating any kind of a stormwater problem area that there might be. You've got to understand what the cause is in order to be able to determine a solution. We had other things, goals or strategies rather, from reduced flooding risks to improving existing stormwater management facilities, all the way down to number eight, which was encouraging and promoting low-impact development strategies. And certainly, your all's stormwater manual is very keen on low-impact development just through some of the green requirements that you have as part of your stormwater regulations. So this was sort of the framework plan that we had identified for the master plan. So in looking at the study area for the master plan, this slide basically highlights the major watersheds that basically comprise the city and the urban service boundary. And frankly, as you look at where the city could potentially grow in the future, there are really five watersheds that are affected by the study or that we're considering as part of our evaluation. Kane Run is the major one along the south that comes out of Fayette County. Dry Run is one that comes down from the north. You have a lot of, you have industrial development areas in the north on Dry Run, and then some development further in the south. Lanes Run is another watershed very similar in context, you know, with Toyota partly draining into that tributary. Then McCracken Creek, which is the Derby Estates watershed, and small watershed, but you know, they've got major problems for some of the issues that you all are here to talk about tonight. And then certainly, last but not least, North Elkhorn, which is a major stream that runs through the city that goes all the way up into Lexington. And so you have a major, major stream there. That's an asset on one hand, but it's also a big generator of stormwater and flood flows when you have a big rain event that kind of is more regional in scale. So the master plan looked at a number of considerations, and these were some of the things that we evaluated and reviewed as part of our process. You know, looking at the areas, things like land use, some of the reported stormwater problems, and we did have a number of those that had been archived that we were able to document through Kyle's office. Also, looking at things like septic and package plant problems, you know, looking at the water quality aspect of this, because as an MS4 community, you can't just look at flooding as part of your stormwater program. It's also, you have a responsibility, you know, as part of the EPA mandate to be sensitive to some of their requirements for the MS4 program that relate to water quality issues. So we wanted to be mindful of that in our evaluation process. And then also looking at erosion studies and other previous watershed studies to help inform our process. I mentioned the outreach to the public. This was in late last year, in October, we actually held public meetings, and we did, we conducted the meetings on a watershed basis so there could be sort of a structure to it. And I'll have to say this, I've been doing master planning for a long time in my career, and I've never worked in a community where they sent, they literally sent mailers out to every resident. And I think, what was it, Kyle, 13,000 postcards. And this little card up here in the upper right-hand corner was the card that was sent out to every resident inviting them to their specific watershed open house meeting. And we staffed those. We had a number of people there to engage in conversations about their problems and talk to folks, some folks from Derby Estates and some other areas, and really had a really good opportunity to meet with people who had some serious issues. And you know, there were some that were what I would call larger scale, where there were a number of homes sort of in a similar situation. And then we had certain folks that, just kind of like one property owner with a neighbor who had an issue and kind of in a issue, how do they resolve something like that? And I think that's one of the challenges that on every level, you try to figure out, well, how do you fix it? Because ultimately, that's the root of a master plan is to help figure out a way that determines how you fix it. You know, what does that strategy look like? What is that implementation approach? And so even sending out 13,000 notices, we basically had 40 people show up to the three meetings that we had. And then we had 20, I think 23 had reported some sort of flooding. So that was the, you know, that was the feedback that we got. Now, we know there are more problems out there than that. You know, sometimes people may have missed the meeting. You know, there's a lot of things that could have come up that maybe reduced that participation level, but you know, from that standpoint, there really wasn't the turnout that we had expected at the meeting. Now, again, Derby Estates was well-represented, I would just say, just so the folks here know So as a product of that, we had this, you know, the problem identification through these different venues. We identified a number of problems, you know, from localized flooding issues, structural deficiencies that we had. There's, you know, there's a lot of infrastructure issues out there that need to be corrected. Easement encroachment issues where we have fences and things that are blocking drainage courses or where they've encroached. In some cases, enaisements, in other cases, there may not be enaisements, but there may be encroachments that are contributing to a problem because people may not necessarily understand the correlation of, you know, proximity. If you put a fence and you start restricting a drainage course, that that can have an adverse effect on somebody upstream or even on the other side of the creek, because you push the water in a different direction. Erosion and other things. And this map, and I'm going to go through this in just a minute on, kind of on a smaller level, this map identifies problem areas or projects that we have. These are projects that would need to be studied, but projects that we've given a tag based on their location, for example, in their sub watershed. Like, for example, there might be one called LR6. I'm just going to use that since we're going to the next slide. Here, it shows a project that we've identified in Lanes Run Subwatershed 6 that we've highlighted as one that would need to be reviewed and investigated to see if there is something that needs to be addressed here. You know, we got a, we received a complaint at this location, and obviously, there's someone that has raised a concern, and this would be an area that would be looked at to evaluate the merits of whether there would be justification for identifying this as a project that would be added to a list for additional study at some point in the future. And then continuing on that same trend, and again, you can see the red line here. That red line is the urban service boundary. The dashed black lines represent the watershed boundaries that separate the different watersheds comprising the community. But again, here, you can see as you move sort of from, the first slide was up here in the north, we're sort of moving progressively southward as you look at each one of these slides. And you can see here, there's the rest areas on I-75 with Toyota on the right-hand side. And you see now, we've got Derby Estates over here in McCracken Creek Tributary, right in that area. We know there's a problem area that's been identified there, and it's been, actually been studied, but there are also other areas that are starting to show up now based on our findings as we move closer into the urban setting within the city. And then as you move further into the downtown area, you see here, we're moving into the North Elkhorn watershed, you see the NE designation. Those NEs represent North Elkhorn. For example, NE 12 is the 12th North Elkhorn sub watershed. You begin to see a number of these problem areas that have come out of this effort. And again, these are identified areas that, we're not saying that there's a capital project associated with these. Some of them, we know there are, but there, but these, some of these are problem areas that need to be investigated to see if they merit capital project status. And so that's why we've given them a tag, so that we can literally, in this next phase of the study, we would evaluate the merits based on what we find through that evaluation. And then finally, kind of moving to the last area, as you move further to the south, we get down into the Kane Run Tributary where you see the bypass there where there's actually two circled areas. Those are localized problems. The red dots are a number of structural issues that are occurring along US 25 there. I think those are mostly associated with catch basins and things like that that were identified as in need of major repair. So we're attempting to really categorize things and collect data and information that will help inform subsequent needs. And in this case, those needs may be resolved on US 25 by the transportation cabinet if, you know, through a collaborative effort, since that is a state roadway, if it is their responsibility to in fact do that corrective action work. So where does this take us? Well, through this process, we identified, I mentioned earlier, we had goals, strategies, and then for each, for the different strategies, we came up with what we call action steps or action items. And to kind of help us with the next phase of the master plan, and this is draft, probably should have put a draft watermark on there, but this is a draft assessment based on the findings that we've had to date. But you can see here, for the different watersheds, we've identified, in this case, just a sampling of some of the action items to show you how this master planning process will evolve. We have, number one, basically says to develop a regional stormwater master plan for existing and future development areas. And we sort of ranked each watershed as a low, medium, or high priority based on certain circumstances and conditions. And in the case of Lanes Run and Dry Run, those are high. And you might ask why? You know, there's not a lot there other than industrial area. And so one of the concerns that we have, because the industrial area is up in the northern reaches of those watersheds, is understanding how that industrial area, as it continues to, you see growth in that, and we heard the big news about Toyota, which was wonderful. But industrial area tends to generate high volumes of stormwater runoff. And of course, they have basins and things that they implement as part of their stormwater management approach. But part of our suggestion is that maybe there needs to be a look at a lot of the existing infrastructure that's out there to make sure you're getting the kind of response from that infrastructure so that as that industrial growth continues, that it doesn't adversely affect some of the existing developed areas that are further downstream and then the development that comes along in the future as development continues to grow and push outward towards the industrial area from the south in those same watersheds. And so using that same logic, you know, we looked at things like conducting flood mitigation studies for localized flooding areas. And you see high there, both on McCracken Creek and Elkhorn Creek, and, or North Elkhorn, rather. And of course, McCracken Creek was high, you know, for the obvious reason that you already have been studying efforts in that watershed. And similarly, in North Elkhorn, you know, for example, along the South Broadway Clayton Avenue area there, you've got a serious problem. Avenue area there, you've got a, you've got a serious problem in that, in that location as well. So we've used this kind of logic to basically serve as a, as a mechanism to help us prioritize maybe watersheds or areas that we want to focus on for the next phase of the master planning process. Again, just to help you see that, that this is done in a very progressive fashion and through information and feedback that we get from the public, staff, and, and others, others like stakeholders, you know, through the process. I think I skipped one. No, there we go. We also identified some common action items for all watersheds. And there were certain things that kind of fell in, into the same category for each watershed as we, as we looked and studied their circumstances. And, and one of them involved a need for an asset management program for proactive maintenance. And again, this pilot project is the first step in that direction. We also had one for conservation quarters because encroachment in floodplains seems to be a problem, you know, where you have development that occurs. I think right now there's a 25-foot setback requirement buffer for, for floodplain areas. And, you know, if you're in a, if you're in a downstream area where there's, let's say a thousand acres upstream that's going to develop, 25 feet might be enough today. But when you start looking at the volume impacts that, that occur by that development, that floodplain may change in the future. And so the last thing you want is you, you don't want to have a situation where, where, you know, you allow development to occur and they may be following all the regulations. But if things happen upstream that are, because of the way they, way they evolve, there could be a problem with those homes in the future. And so that certainly would be the worst-case scenario in that sense. And that's why protection of these riparian buffer areas is very important because they serve multiple functions, not only from a flood reduction standpoint and creating that buffer for, for development, but also from a water quality standpoint because it's, it's an area where you get benefit through kind of the natural treatment of, of stormwater runoff before it enters the main receiving streams. We also had one in here for revising drainage easement language on future plats and plans and, and maybe development of an education camp, campaign for the public on issues associated with fence encroachments and easements and drainage courses. And, and, and again, you know, it may, it may seem logical to, to me as an engineer that you wouldn't do that, but there are a lot of folks, they may not recognize how big an area that is that drains to a certain location where that could be very problematic to put a fence across a swell that may actually create a problem on their neighbor or someone else adjacent to the, to the swell. And so these again are certain types of common action items, again, draft form items that would be advanced for consideration in the future. We've talked a little bit about the asset management program and you may be wondering a little bit about what that is. I think certainly the, the council is, is very familiar with this because you, you passed, you know, an authorization for that. But for those that, that may not be, you know, it's all about understanding the infrastructure that exists out there that, in the public realm that the city has responsibility and accountability for in their roadways. And, and certainly that program involves acquiring data on their storm sewer system. You've got to understand what you've got. This program basically involves doing camera inspections of the pipe in targeted areas where we know there are problems. Cleaning, you know, one of the problems you often find where you have flooding is that you have storm sewers that are partially blocked because there's debris in it that, that basically renders them inadequate for their design capacity. And so we will get the photos and video logs for these, for these different evaluations along with cleaning that will, basically this serves as an early action project, if you will, in trying to address proactively some of the needs the city has in its existing storm sewer system. And it's also a tool that will help quantify future maintenance and repair needs. And it's, it's, it's a mechanism that will allow you to be able to more proactively plan and budget for these kinds of improvements in the future as you understand kind of globally, you know, what percentage of your storm drainage system is in a, in a certain condition. You know, you, you want to make sure that, maybe you want to look at addressing a certain amount of that every year because it's an expenditure that's going to come eventually whether, whether we all like it or not. It's that hidden liability that every community has. And so everybody, cities all over the, all over the state, and for that matter, all over the country are dealing with these kinds of infrastructure issues. The next item is kind of shifting away from the master plan and the asset management program to the BMP manual. And this was just a recent accomplishment, kind of a product of the post-construction stormwater ordinance that you all passed. I believe it's been maybe two years ago. There had to be an effort to follow that to, to basically update the BMP manual to address some of the requirements more, more explicitly for the, for, for the development community and, and contracting community so they understood, you know, clearly what the expectations were, both from the standpoint of designing the infrastructure and then also what the responsibilities would be after construction is complete through maintenance and, and compliance inspections that needed to follow in years ahead. This slide basically highlights, again, differences, if you looked at the old manual versus the new manual, where those changes occurred in the BMP manual. And basically they're manifested in three areas. First of all, on the top line there, the old manual was actually included in ordinance. So it was actually a, you had stormwater criteria that were outlined in the city ordinance that the development community had to follow. And, and the new manual was basically, the language wasn't placed in ordinance. It was a separate document that was, that was separated from the ordinance so that it can sort of evolve and, and be modified as, as trends in the industry change and you need to periodically update that document. It also, as you go to the, the second to the bottom one there, it also includes procedures for, I guess, review and inspection of facilities as those facilities are installed because at the end of the day, that's where a lot of the problems with infrastructure occur is this type of infrastructure where it's not put in correctly. It can actually, you know, from the first day it's, it's implemented for, for use, you have problems. And, and again, I'm not saying that's in every case. There are many good contractors out there and good developers that we've actually worked for in the past that do it the right way. And sometimes it's just a, all it takes is one little, one little miscue and, and you've got a problem where a pipe won't flow for some reason. And then finally, the last one on the bottom, there's a requirement for annual inspections that the city has to ensure compliance, you know, on an ongoing basis by the developer or the, or the HOA in this case, that has accountability for that post, post-construction BMP. So finally, future considerations, last slide. And this is all about, you know, what does this all mean in terms of the, you know, from the standpoint of the city and their stormwater program? And all of this, kind of this collective effort is designed to, to basically support these different initiatives to, you know, the first one being to support the approach for defined stormwater projects. You know, we're here to basically play that role as your, as your consultant to help, you know, and however, however those stormwater projects need to be implemented to help you chart, chart your course for doing that. It's also, serves as a means to help investigate other localized flooding issues and water quality problem areas. The asset management program is there to help identify repair and replacement projects, you know, that, that may need to be, need to happen, make it happen in a programmed fashion if they're deemed to be not serious. But there may be some that are found that they need to be implemented very soon. And that's where you need to have the resources available to address those types of findings, maybe on a shorter-term basis. We also need to be flexible in considering needs for potential policy updates identified on a watershed level. You know, for example, as you think about expansion and expansion beyond the current urban service boundary, we need to, maybe there needs to be a closer look at some of the stormwater considerations for some of the growth areas. For example, you know, the current plan is to let, to have basically individual basins go for each development where you have a number of basins that sort of proliferate. Maybe a regional basin might be a better solution in certain cases that there could be sort of a shared, maybe a shared approach in helping fund that. And that's a way that we've seen in other communities that they've done that and, and it, it can be a more effective approach if it's necessary. And again, I'm not saying that that necessarily applies in every case, but it's something, it's a tool in the toolbox that could be considered. And then certainly last but not least is, as you begin to implement this BMP inspection program the city has, the responsibility to follow up as part of their MS4 duties, you know, you're going to see probably some needs to, to maybe step in and do some things, maybe on certain basins that, that need improvements that, that, you know, whether that falls to the homeowner association or, or maybe there's not a definition of responsibility for that. Is there a way the city can maybe look at things and find a way to improve something and make it perform better than it currently does that benefits the public and the community at large? So a lot of these are, you know, kind of responses that lead to future questions and discussions for another day. But this is, I just wanted to present these, this context here just to help bring a little bit of understanding to, you know, how all these things tie together in a broader sense in looking at the future of your stormwater program and, and the work that, that the city is currently doing. There's a lot of effort. You all have, are, are doing a lot of work in many different areas that, again, they hit the, the high-level things and some of these are things that you have responsibility for. And some of these are being very proactive, like the master plan and trying to look, be forward-thinking in your approach with, which I certainly applaud and, and I think the, the public would as well, you know, understanding what we're doing here. So, so with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you for that broader context, Mike.
We've heard, we've been talking about stormwater conditions for years. And our biggest problem we have is financially how we're going to fix it. We discussed that the other day, Kyle. You know, there, what'd you say, there's probably five million dollars worth of stormwater projects out there right now? Or more?
Oh, I know of one that's five billion dollars.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We got, we got, I mean, there's, look at how many million dollars worth of projects out there. We've got to figure a solution if we're going to solve the problem. It's not going to happen without doing something.
Yes, sir. And, and I think this kind of awareness from our engineers, to the council and to the public helps us begin to get our arms around that brother. And I think that sets us up well for probably a more focused look, Kyle. Was that, was that your plan?
Yes, it was.
Good job.
Thank you, Mike. We have Fred and Doug here from ECSI. They were our consulting engineers that we hired for specifically the Derby Estates projects. If you recall, there were two of them. There was the wing wall project, which ended up being around $55,000. And that we repaired first because the failing wing walls could have impacted the bridge there. And now we're talking about project area two, which is the drainage, swell, erosion problem and flooding issues between Tim Tam and Don Arrell Drive.
Mayor, council members and citizens, community, thanks for having us here. As Kyle said, I'm Doug Mineer with ECSI. Fred Eastridge, we both worked on, on the Derby Estates project. Actually Fred worked on the northern part of it with the wing walls and, and I did the modeling and, and some design on the, on the southern part of the project. So apologize for two things. First of all, don't have a real formal presentation. Have copies of the plans and stuff that we did. I wanted to talk through that. And also the approach that we went through. And second of all, it's been about two or three years, so my memory may fail me on some of the stuff, so.
I'm sure the neighbors will remind you.
When the bypass went through, the problems began, so there you go. Yeah, we got worse.
Actually, this shows the two projects there, the northern part and the southern part. On down another... Okay, yeah. Yeah, it kind of starts it there. Just a bit of a pointer. Yes, no. So anyway. Handyman. So when we were, first became involved in this project, we were explaining, or explaining to us that, you know, some of the problems were the deep flows in the backyards. It's also erosion starting to show up in the yards. And after we walked the site, you know, we found that the telecommunications, electrical lines were exposed down there. So it's, well, obviously a lot of flow was going through there. And I know it was brought up this minute ago that the problems didn't start until the KYTC put the bypass in. We looked at that. I, you know, I understand, you know, how that could be, but when we modeled the thing, our flows were coming out pretty much what KYTC said was coming through there. There was a, some speculation, I guess as well, that there may have been a sinkhole that was filled over, allowing that flow to come on downstream. We, you know, checked with the highway department and the contractor. They said, no, that didn't happen. But, I mean, you know, other than that, I can't say whether it was or not. But anyway, our, our flows were not showing much difference from what they had calculated in there, in our model. We ran several different model scenarios on it trying to come up with a solution on it. We tried putting detention upstream of the embankment, of the rail, highway embankment to slow down the flow as it came through. Didn't really have much success in, in doing that. We were still getting, you know, higher depths as it came through the neighborhood. So then we started looking at improving the channel through the, those backyards. And, I'm sure it went well, but I wonder if you can see. Where it comes through the embankment up, up here, picking up and going with a wider channel down through and on down through the next part of the subdivision there. We tried a couple of different things. We tried a three-foot wide, flat-bottom channel. That still allowed flows of about two, over two feet, about 2.2 feet. And then we went with a wider six-foot channel and that was still right at two feet. It's about 1.9 feet deep in there. You know, it's still going to lead to erosion problems in there. It's also a safety factor. I'm sure that, you know, there's children in it, in the area and, you know, you don't want two-foot flow coming through a backyard, you know, with the possibility of children being back there. Then we looked at a little, Kyle, could you go on down to a few sheets on down details there? You know, you can zoom in on it, one in the middle at the top up there. So we'd set a goal in doing the project of, of reducing those flows in the channel to one foot or less in, in depth for the 25-year and 100-year storms. And we, you know, we tried to get everything into a pipe to start with. Of course, that led to too big of a pipe. So we came up with a, a pipe and a channel system above it as shown in this, with the channel above. What it allows for, most of the, the storms would be carried through by the pipe itself. Into 25-year and probably even 10-year actually, but in larger storms, it would flow through the pipe until the pipe was full and then it would spill over into the channel and the channel would help convey the flow downstream as well. And by doing this, the 25-year, we were able to, to get 0.9 feet of flow in the channel in one foot for the 100-year. So that's the system we went with. Originally, I guess about, the original design interfered with some of the utilities, particularly the electrical system and was leading to very high costs in that. We went to relocate transformers and a whole electrical line down through there. And obviously the electric company was balking at that, plus it was going to cost, I think about 100,000, 100,000-plus extra in doing that. So we went back, I guess in early 2016, early, mid-2000s. So we went back, uh, I guess in early 2016, early, mid 2016, took another look at it, moving the channel more to the, I think, south, uh, and to get away from interference with those utilities. And we were able to reduce that, uh, cost by about a hundred thousand dollars in doing that. So, uh, and really, uh, that's kind of where we stand at now on that, uh, so.
And that was actually, I think, uh, the council, you know, has looked at this project for some time. And, uh, I think it was the council's suggestion that we look at another engineering approach that led to the lower estimate.
Yes.
That we're now discussing. So, council's been involved in, in two of the designs.
Exactly. Yeah, we, we did come.
For the specific area.
Yeah, we came before you, probably two years ago or something like it with the original design. And I know afterwards, then you looked at it and, and came back with that.
When you all talk about the flow didn't change much with pipes coming underneath the, the bypass and stuff, even though it's collecting, how many acres of ground that is running into that one?
Mm-hmm.
How do you, how do you not say the flow didn't increase? So that, that's why I'm, I think that's why they're confused too. I mean.
Yeah, and.
We live there, we know what.
Yeah, I, I understand and.
What is that, a four-foot pipe underneath there? Four-foot, three-foot?
Uh, the, you have the culvert.
Yeah, the culvert that comes through.
The thirty inches.
It's two and a half foot pipe and all that water gathering on the other side has got to make that flow.
Well, okay. Uh, and I, I understand that area was up there before anything was done.
But it wasn't designated into one area where it's coming through like that. It was spread out.
We, we did have a wet weather spring.
Right.
Yeah.
I live at 130. I live right there, right, yeah, right there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Before, that was a gradual flow down toward our, all of our property.
Yeah.
They took that gradual flow when the wet weather came, wet weather spring came.
It would come and it would flow and it would spread out and it would go. And it was a gradual thing. Now it's all focused going down both sides of the mountain that they built. On the other side, we get all the water from the other side of the road comes underneath that culvert. Both sides of the mountain comes. Up the street, it comes. From this way, it comes. And it all comes down, comes through my yard and then proceeds on down through the rest of them.
Can you relax?
It was clean.
I went to Judy's on Friday and I saw evidence of it. And I couldn't believe how strong the force must have been with all the sediment.
The debris.
The debris.
I've got debris, two feet.
And there is, as you see on the, on the, on this aerial photo of it, the big area was the one that led up to the northern, where we did the channel, I mean, the wing wall improvements. This area right in here is what's draining down through Derby Estate, or well, the, the southern part here. Uh, this is the highway embankment's built across it. So, what I'm saying is, nothing up here changed. On the highway, you've got more paved surface and you also have the steeper slopes, which are going to lead to some increased flow. Uh, when the highway department did their calculations, they had about five CFS and extra coming through there. Uh, they had a very small increase in what the channel would carry supposedly, okay? Uh, and all I'm saying is that when we ran those calculations, you know, nothing up here changes, but the extra on here, we got about six CFS, which, you know, five versus the six, uh, there's not a lot of difference there. But, you know, I, I know that sometimes, you know, you can live there 25 years and it never happens that next day you get the big flood right after, you know, something that sometimes is coincidental. So I don't know. I mean, I'm just, you know, in the model that we ran, it shows pretty much what they, they saw. And when I tried to block off most of this flow up here with the tension in this area, I was still getting flooding in here. And a lot of this because this little area right in here that's been developed is giving off more flow than this area up here is. Uh, so, like I say, if there was this, you know, possibility of that sinkhole that was up there, was discussed before, we have no way of knowing. Uh, they say it wasn't there. So.
You mentioned that to us in a prior meeting as well, right?
I'm sorry?
Didn't you mention that to us in a prior meeting as well about that analysis?
Yeah.
Because that's, that's what I have a hard time, I keep struggling with. Logically, it seems like to me you could put some type of a, a, a reduction system on the other side of the bypass and it would slow it down enough to, to lower the flow, but with certainty, you, you say that won't happen.
Well, the, the other, the other thing is, this is farmland up here. It's, uh, mostly pasture. When you get rainfall on that, it's going to soak in more than runs off. This area that has developed, the roofs, the parking, or the, the driveways, the roadways and everything, you get, you know, 90% runs off on that or more. So, uh, that's, you know, in, in the modeling of it, that's what it was showing, is that we could not detain enough water up here to make a significant difference in the depth of water in these channels.
Well, would Judy's situation be different than the rest of the community's situation? Because she's right behind that big open pipe. Is that why it may not be affecting the downstream in the community any differently, but it would affect her differently?
I'm not really sure what.
It's both from my house to the Joneses' house.
Yeah.
Watch it go.
Yeah, it does.
But it's, but coming in, is it not, as I remember the past conversation, that it's coming into the neighborhood in two situ- two situations? The hole behind Judy's house, the creek behind, and then part of the, as you go, she's here, and then further down it's coming through this way and coming this way?
I've got three entrances that now come in my yard.
Okay, you, you have from back here, right?
Uh-huh.
You have coming down this way?
Uh-huh.
And you have coming through the pipe?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, um.
And then, but then it leaves my yard and goes to the Joneses'.
Yeah.
I mean, it just comes through. I'm just the pathway. And they've got, and I mean, when it hits their yard, it's, I mean, it's made a hole in their yard.
Yeah.
We've lived there since oh-three and we had one time where there was water, like a little stream in the backyard. Now every time it rains.
Yeah, it's every time now.
It's two feet deep and ten feet long.
The video we have is very compelling. It's, you're talking about the strength of the water and children. It is a major safety issue for children.
I, I, when we modeled, I mean, the system, it, it was showing like, you know, up to three feet of water back there, which I think has been verified.
Our footers, our fence footers are this, this raw. I mean, when you see the footer where everything has eroded, we've got three, that footers that are just almost gone, you know, the ground around it. So when it just catches the debris, it's pushing its, its, um, pushing fences, just rotting the wood off of the, the nails.
That's what I was amazed when I went and you showed it to me. You definitely put up extra fencing and extra support, just to.
And it's temporary, just to, yeah. But it has, can't be anything permanent. We've done wire because we still have to have that flow. If not, it just backs up and we have a pond. We don't want a pond in our yard either.
So I, I know that, you know, the fences down there kind of make a circuitous path through the, through the neighborhood. And I've looked, a couple of them may actually be on an easel, so.
So it's what you're suggestion, suggesting to the council as a fix, will it fix the problem?
Well, I mean, we run the model and, and that's what we have found, that in order to fix the problem, we need to pass the flow through there. Uh, and that's, I mean, the pipe plus the channel, yes, it shows that, uh, we can pass the flow through. And also what I didn't really mention about the, the channel, uh, we have armored that with a, reinforced turf mat. It's, uh, to carry higher velocities without eroding. Uh, it basically is a, uh, probably propylene mat and a heavy-duty one that allows the grass to grow up through it. So, uh, I think it had supposedly velocities up to 20 feet per second is what it was supposed to carry, so. And as I say, that won't be used on a, or should not be used on a real regular basis because the, the 30-inch pipe will carry most of the, the storms through there without ever getting in the yards, so.
I have a question. Break it down so another way that maybe I can understand it better. How many inches of rain per hour will it rain that it, the pipe will take care of?
Uh, the 10-year storm, help me out, the other engineers here, I think is like.
It's 3.1.
It's a 3.1 and.
The 5.1 for the 25.
And 100 years, like 6.2, 6.3 in that range or something like that, so.
Okay.
Uh, you know, it's a, over a 24-hour period. I mean, it's pretty good rain. Uh, and as I say, on the 100-year storm, which is a 6.2 inches of rain, we get about a foot of depth in the channel. The rest of it's carried through the pipe.
Karen, when you came, how long had been raining that? It just started that, earlier that morning, hadn't it?
Yeah, it hadn't been raining all that long.
And I called her and she, because she had told me, she said, "Call me next time it rains." And I said, "Come on over." And she did.
And I didn't want to make coffee with that.
And I did the Latin. This last week, when it rained, I did go out there too, but I almost let it get too dark. So I went up on the bypass and parked and then took a picture over into the, actually over into the field and over into the basin to see how much water was standing over there. And it did, that's the first time I looked at that part of it. And it did surprise me that you've got two, you've got, this water is definitely directed over to it. And then you've got, on that side, you've actually got two, uh, rock paths to bring the water right down into it and come. And when I got there, it stopped raining, but there was water that was setting completely in that channel, um, that was there.
And then when you get on the other side, after you get there, there's a rock path right to my yard.
They directed the water, they intended to direct the water.
To my yard.
To the other side, unto the lowest point, which is in your yard.
Yeah, which is my yard.
Which makes me, makes, bothers me, I was getting ready to say another word, bothers me just a little bit that now we're going to go back as the city and help fix the problem that, yes, there was a problem before the state got there, but they haven't helped our problem. And then we're going to have to, we're going to have to pay for it to help your all's problem. But nevertheless, it sounds like there's not much we're going to do about that. But we need to fix, figure out how to help your problem. What about, if you move this line this way to help save a hundred thousand dollars or so out of the budget, are we then, what about people that have fences and things like that? How does that affect their problem?
Uh, I mean, we've tried to miss stuff as much as possible. When we get on down to the other end, some of the fences were, are basically right in the, the creek or in the, in a channel down through there. So we will have to move a couple of them back. The existing fences, this little line here.
She doesn't have it.
Yeah. And so we've, we've moved the channel over here.
We did know with, with the.
The fences don't extend all the way down through there. They start, uh.
What about the one that you're right where you're, right where you're at there? That deck is so close to that drain, will that be any problem, any problem there?
That's a 10-foot easement there, right?
Yeah.
Is that what that is?
Yeah, the 10-foot drainage.
Is that your home?
Yeah.
So you got any problem with moving that line where that's at? I mean.
The box right up from that flexible box, you come to your left corner.
Yeah.
Back toward.
No, back the other way.
Back the other way.
You're talking here or over here?
Oh, yeah, back over toward, uh.
Go up a little bit.
Yeah.
There's a box right back here.
Yeah, there is, uh, well.
It's washed it away.
Yeah.
I think it's on the next sheet over actually.
It goes right over top of it.
Goes right over top of it.
Well, there is, there's not an easement across my property there.
Right here. And that's, that's where we had to move this way or south in order to miss that. That was.
You're moving in towards the cul-de-sac.
Yes.
That's not actually in code.
I'm sorry?
That's not actually in code, but you're moving towards that cul-de-sac?
Mm-hmm.
Realize there's less than 20 feet there. 25 feet. Between the, between the middle of the, the right-of-way and that cul-de-sac is in the wrong place. They put it too close to the water. That's what's caused half the problem with runoff. That's an open channel at the end of that cul-de-sac and it runs at about 25 degrees downhill. It runs in, I put the rocks before he ever moved there. I had to because it was eroding the side of the hill out. And I put the dirt back because it was starting to run to my house. But that, that shouldn't, they put an open cul-de-sac at this angle, running towards the water, running towards.
No storm drain, nothing to catch that.
Yeah.
There's no catchment box, no nothing. And it shouldn't have been left like that. It shouldn't actually be at that angle. It should be pitched back the other direction outside the street.
Exactly. To run to the storm drain.
And they, they did the easiest thing, not the right thing.
Yeah, that's all running in the back of our yard right there because the slope is on. They've actually cut the concrete out.
So that it does stand.
The air students came out and did it. I don't know about it.
I have one over there.
This is all wrong.
Did you come out when it was actually massive, when there was a huge rain and it was doing this? Have you, has anybody been there when it's doing now?
I haven't been out there when it was raining. I've just seen the pictures from.
So you've seen these pictures?
Has the city still got copies of what we, uh, presented last year by any chance? We had several videos, several pictures that we shared with you.
Yeah, yeah. We, we do have the pictures. We, we knew that there might be a video from this evening that.
Yes, there is. That's Mr. Hartman. Yeah, Hartman. Do you have that?
Do we need it? I don't think we need, I think, I think, I think we know what we're doing.
I think we know. Council might be ready to do something. We're not a hundred percent sure what we're going to do, which, which direction to go with it. But I think you all are sick and tired and how many times have you all been here now? How long? It's, it's time for us to do something.
Over two years.
Well, you normally don't get a bid come back a hundred thousand dollar cheaper than what it was a year or so ago.
I, the reason I asked, I asked the mayor to contact, um, the folks that live out there so that they would be aware that there would be some issues, what, if we full flood do this, that there would be issues about maybe some fences have to be moved and, and that type of thing. Um, but.
Karen, after Kyle sent me this, I went, I made copies and brought it around to all the neighbors.
Great.
Saturday. So they all knew.
Yeah, that's how I got them.
Yeah.
You did a good job.
I went around to all of them so they would know what we would, were talking about on this, you know, back page, you know, the different things that it might be in our yards instead of being in the utility easement. It might involve some work in our yard.
And everybody'd see and.
Yeah.
They thought that.
We want to get rid of the problem.
Yeah. The state's not going to get involved at all.
No, no, it's not.
So how much is the bid minus a hundred thousand dollars?
I'm sorry?
What's the bid without minus a hundred thousand dollars?
Two.
Uh, 258.
258.
258?
I think I had it on, on the.
Yeah, 258 for you.
On, on your model, can you back that up a little bit, make it smaller? If I could, I'll lift my finger here. Back up to the, where the bypass is. On the other side of the bypass where the retain, where the small retention rock is for the flow, did you all do a model where you had a retention pond and actually ran a, uh, a 30-inch pipe down to the larger portion of the creek?
Around the subdivision?
Round the subdivision, down, downhill. Yeah, wait, yeah, back it up way out to where the creek is, where the large new bridge is, downstream, south? No, out of the subdivision. I'm talking about on the bypass.
Yeah. And we don't, we don't go any further that direction on this. We can only look at this.
Yeah, see right there?
Yeah.
Right there. If you run that retention pond there and run that pipe south to the stream, but south of us.
Oh, down here?
No, either way. Either way, just retain it enough to where it holds water enough for it to start running.
There's a stream to the east.
There's a, there's a stream to the east and there's one to the south that's very large. It's, it's the, uh.
It's on the far lane.
Smcrackin, uh, creek.
Talk about this? That's Smcrackin?
No, no.
Where the, where the.
Yeah, the, the large portion of.
Yeah, right there where the hand is.
Yeah.
All that?
Yeah. If you run that past the subdivision on the other side of the, of the break and run it south, it's all downhill from there. If you run the pipe, it'll, there'll be enough flow that you don't actually have to worry about pushing it and actually excavating it so deep because of the speed.
I think it was.
Get to your left here.
I don't know how much crap you'd have to do to, to go around that.
Over here to the.
I think it's uphill.
No, to the, to the left.
Nudge, yeah.
I'm gonna have to get up. I'm gonna have to get up.
You can point at it.
I will point at it. Right here.
Right here, Thomas.
If you go from here, south, all the way down to McCracken Creek.
Oh, this, this is the top of the watershed though. That's where that line is.
But where's the bypass?
Bypass is through here.
If you, if you pit it up enough right here until the water flow gets high enough and moves fast enough here, all the way down, following the road.
Let it run the far line.
And let it run down to McCracken Creek. By the time it gets here, you have to actually dredge to, to ground level to, to make it an angle.
This, this is the high point in the watershed, coming around through here.
If you dam the water at the high point and run it to the low point, gravity will take care of the flow. You don't actually have to push it in, in a straight angle because between here and theirs is about two hills you have to go through.
I have to push it over on that quad sheet. I don't know if it's got enough on it or not.
We may not have the authority to be able to do that since that's going into-
Good crop.
Private property. Well, it's not the city property, yeah, to the county.
If the state will give you the right-of-way, since they're not gonna pay for it, seems like they could help us out a little bit.
Yeah, didn't really show me a whole lot of-
Right, this is the high point because when you drive from-
Right here is the area we're talking about.
Right.
There's a swale that comes down through here. What I'm saying is there's a, the high point, that's come through here. I don't think you can run down that way.
Talking about difference of elevation, five, ten, fifteen, twenty-
Yeah.
Twenty-five feet. You can't run it away the other direction. You can't push it the other direction.
You can't get the water over top.
No, it's, uh, I mean, we, we got the low spires right in here. This is the high point that comes through here, as Fred was just pointing out. You know, over here, uh, we're going, let's make sure I got these right, you know, this ten foot contour or so. You know, we've got at least twenty feet difference in elevation there or so.
Excuse me. Uh, I don't live at Derby Estates, but as I said earlier, I'm a horticulturist and I've advocated trees throughout the town and, and as a substitute for mowing. I've been advocating that for years. I'm here to tell you that just the one, if you resort to vegetation to solve your problems, you have the law, the Georgetown ordinance on your side, this is ordinance number oh-six dash oh-two-seven, which allows anybody in Georgetown to forego mowing and to allow natural vegetation to occur. And, and that may be of use to you. Furthermore, Kentucky State Division of Forestry, the statutes on forestry in Kentucky encourage small-scale, non-industrial urban forests. I forget the number, but you can look it up. It's in the Kentucky KRS statutes on forestry. The third thing I wanted to say is that sixteen U.S. Code, that's, uh, chapter sixteen of the U.S. Code of, uh, from the U.S. Congress, funds, offers funding for what they call community, urban and community forestry. So if you decide to resort, I, I, I can't follow this problem. I don't, never seen it. I've never been there. But if you decide to rely on vegetation, I will say further, US EPA publishes something called the Green Acres Program, including a handbook on, on natural landscaping for public officials. And in that, in that handbook, they say repeatedly that the main, the main reason that they publish this program is to mitigate floods with vegetation. It's something, I assume you might want to look at that. It's the Green Acres Program published by US EPA. And finally, uh, I'll, I'll say that the, uh, that this, this, uh, chapter sixteen of the, of the U.S. Code, um, I can't remember the number, but they will, they offer funding. You may be able to get funding from the federal government for urban forestry. You'll have to look it up. I don't know the details on the, I can't cite you the statute. That's what I had to say. That's why I'm here. Thank you.
Mayor, I think the council might be ready to proceed with saying we go ahead with this project to try to help this neighborhood out because they've been patient for a very long time.
Right.
And, um, but I'll throw that back to you as to what the next step is that we need to do to get it started.
Yeah, and, uh, I think we, I think we've got adequate engineering information. We've had adequate engineering information for a while. Uh, I think it's been a funding decision, frankly, actually allocating the funds. I am pleased that, to tell you that our department heads have already turned in their departmental budgets for the upcoming budget year, which will begin July one. And we're processing through those requests now to get that budget document ready to bring to the council. Uh, in Kyle's capital expenditure request for the upcoming budget, he's already included this for funding in his budget request. So from an administrative point of view, uh, we've already started that process. Uh, now, I think the council would have a choice of, you know, obviously, we, we'll want to revisit the plans. We want very precisely to know what will work and won't work. And I do think we need to be in a position to tell every resident if we're gonna affect their yard or their fence in any way. I think we need to know all those answers for you. But I think we will be ready from a funding point of view, assuming that the budget balances and the council approves that budget, to be able to fund that improvement, uh, after July one. Uh, the other option that the council has, uh, is to, uh, Stacy and I have already realized that we're gonna have to do an amended budget right at the end of this fiscal year, uh, to clean up some things we've done over the last couple of months. So we'll have an amended budget prior to our passage of the next fiscal year budget. Uh, council could also direct us, should you choose to move quicker than July first, uh, to consider, uh, including that in our amended budget that will be coming sooner, uh, even if we have to use prior year's revenue.
Right.
Which we've done for other projects. Uh, and that way, we could immediately begin final engineering and move forward. So I think we've got two different funding scenarios. Uh, I think council's heard adequate information about moving forward.
If I may ask a question on that, if, uh, cause you need to come back to this and, and have a little bit deeper presentation, like you said, and, and check all those balances, which you might be able to by next meeting, maybe. But what type of timetable from drop, start to finish are you talking about, whether we start now or we wait till July?
Well, I think one of the, um, large unknowns is acquiring additional easements.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's gonna take the most time.
So that need, that, then that, in that case, you need to start that now. But are we really talking about if we start that now, that much more funding? I mean, we're only talking two months, two months jump time on it.
Right now, you're in weather time.
Yeah. Yeah, so, if you're doing the easements, acquiring the easements now, how much funding are you talking about before the budget is passed?
The estimates are not included in that estimate.
Correct.
Yeah, they're not.
But, you know, um, removing and replacing fences outside of the new easement is included in that budget.
What about outbuildings?
I'm sorry?
What about outbuildings that are on the property?
I'm not sure any of them were impacted.
There was a swing set that needs to be moved. But there was-
I know which one you're talking about. It's right in there, it's in there, right down there at the thing. Yeah, no, I know which one you're talking about.
And I think there was one shed, uh, pretty close to your house up there that needed to be moved back a little bit. Or then we came the other way.
It's, it's right near the, uh, the pipe outfalls from the state road. Um, there's a shed up there that, what we did was to-
The Joneses, your shed.
What we did was we aligned the interception pipe in line with the state's discharge pipe. Otherwise, it was gonna be offset and it's gonna be a lot harder to capture that water.
Yeah, we originally tried to stay in the existing easement and that was the, the higher cost option. And so, uh, once we came back and revisited, got moving out of the easement, just acquired a new easement to do it.
So then, if you could come back with, with the clear proposal for next meeting, then we could actually get started in May, but really not reflect much change to this year's budget with the pre-things that you're gonna go on and do to get ready. And then on July the first, you're ready to start digging what you need to do.
I think the first step is, is finalizing engineering plans and, um, having a surveyor or, I'm sure, actually Fred's the surveyor. Are you surveying too?
No, Chris.
Fred is.
Chris.
Okay.
Um, prepare those, those easement, uh, documents. I know there's a new process for that at the state, does that sound right? No, that was right-of-way, I'm sorry.
Me easements, Doug.
How many easements do you think we need?
We don't remember, we don't remember the way you said that. I'm sorry, we don't remember.
So you're not talking very much, much to do that. So we could go on and do that in this year's budget and then the big project start.
We're, we probably wouldn't want to start, uh, the actual construction project until, um, later summer, early fall, just because of the amount of rain.
Yeah.
Gotta go on through all the damage.
Yeah. Look at all those skidies.
About those six months of swimming, can you do?
It's just my two little, my two little dogs about to start helping.
Motion, mayor, or anything?
That council supports this project?
Would like to move forward. That we'd like to move forward.
Thank you, Sherry.
You are, would, yes, ma'am?
Motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that, uh, it's for the council to indicate to the neighbors that they support this project and are willing to move forward with the right engineering plan. Then we'll, we'll see about, uh, precise plans. We do, I think it'd be helpful to meet with you all again, once we know exactly what fences are affected.
Right.
We don't want to surprise anybody. Uh, we, we tend to trip over unintended consequences in this room. We think we know what we're doing, but we end up tripping over things we hadn't anticipated. So we'd like to avoid that if we can. Uh, and then we will work on, on preparation of the budget and council will expect this project to be in the capital expenditures part of our upcoming budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you.
All right.
I, I know on behalf of council, we just, you know, I don't, can't say we apologize, but we're so sorry that we couldn't do something. We should've done something sooner. But we're glad you all had the patience and now we're moving forward.
Thank you.
And Judy, we're gonna, we're gonna, you all being here has actually been helpful. Cause if we, we've let Strand give a broader presentation, uh, about the many areas in Georgetown that need the same attention that Derby Estates does. And that we need to complete our stormwater master plan. We need to prioritize the issues that exist because you all got neighbors in other neighborhoods that are suffering as bad as you are. And, and we want to make sure that we're fair about getting everybody's problem addressed.
Cause the next neighborhood that we need to start thinking is Eter, Eter Lane, um, Eter Woods, because they called me when it was raining. Actually, she contacted me on Facebook and said, "Look at this." And I said, "I'll be right there." So, uh, it, it was pouring up there and, and it was like two and a half foot deep and it's coming up there. But you addressed earlier about, uh, US twenty-five, maybe something on that. And we could contact the state to see about that, if maybe some, cleaning up some of that. Because it's awful. I couldn't even turn around their driveway. It was so deep, coming across their driveways up there. So-
And historically, that's a great example of a county subdivision-
Yes.
That was developed a very long time ago to county specifications with none of these improvements.
That's right.
That has now been amixed into the city.
Mm-hmm. And there's no drainage.
There's no sewer. So, yes, we, we do have a, you all got a lot of company. If misery loves company, you've got some company. But we're, we're delighted to be at this point. Uh, thank you for your presentation to the council. And, uh, there's clearly an intent for us to move forward with this expeditiously.
Thank you.
So if you'll get with Kyle, uh, we'll do what we need to do. Thank you, Judy.
Move forward.
Thank you.
See, sorry.
You're welcome.
Pass this this way.
They didn't need it.
It might've made us scary.
Oh, I can imagine. I couldn't believe it, looking into y'all's yard. It was, I mean, just at the level. And you know, when I pulled up to her house, seeing that big mountain, it's like, what did I expect?
Stormwater thing is like a broader, futuristic, what, what we're trying to look to address.
I can't.
Right now.
Oh, they haven't stepped up.
I can. I can. I can. And you know, the frustration thing is the state transportation.
We won't be cherry picking projects. We'll have a massive-
Judges, have they got, so yeah, they got twenty percent raises. It's all so- Oh, wow.
If you can't get an easement, you can't go through the property.
Yeah, you should. You need to celebrate it. You really should.
Have an easement party.
We could- We could go ahead and call the meeting back to order. Uh, next on the agenda is, uh, mayor's comments. And, uh, we, we do want to mention, uh, some things that would've been really nice to mention when we had a bigger audience. But, uh, we do have, uh, our students from ECS back in the broadcast booth. Delighted to have these students doing this with us. Um, since we last met, you know, the students were here at the last meeting, was their first time. Uh, the first week after that council meeting, uh, their, their teacher, Ms. Cogan, was in California with a group of students. The second week, uh, they were on spring break. So we have not had a chance to meet with the teacher or the students yet. Uh, but we're looking forward to doing that and, uh, making sure that this is working well for both the students, uh, and the public and how we improve it going forward. Uh, so thank you all back in the broadcast booth. Uh, just wanted, uh, to mention, uh, the, the, uh, the obvious today, the very, uh, good news that we received at the, uh, press conference this morning concerning the investment by Toyota Motor Manufacturing. Uh, I'm says, I'm sure you all have heard by now, they announced, uh, an additional investment into this plant of one point three-three billion dollars. Uh, it's a lot of, it's a lot of money and, uh, the outcome, I think, will be very significant. Uh, their, their, their plan with this global architecture, uh, arrangement is to be able to change models more quickly as the market changes. Uh, right now, sedan sales are going down, truck and SUV sales are going up. We make sedans. So you like to have the line flexibility to react to that. Uh, as we understand it, there's only one plant in the world right now that has this technology and it is a Toyota plant in Japan. Uh, this will be the second plant in the world to have this technology and the first in North America. There's no doubt about it. The, the business park, the other thing that I think will really, uh, help the business park is the engineering, production engineering building, which is getting closer to opening. Uh, they're now expecting almost seven hundred, uh, engineers and support staff. Uh, my hope is that one day, that's where the spin-off businesses come from, is from the production engineering building. Um, the big takeaway from this is, uh, it's a big number and that's nice, but what it means is Toyota's gonna be a part of this community for a very long time. They're not going anywhere.
That's right.
And, uh, I think that, for me, the golden ring takeaway is that this plant in Georgetown are gonna stay relevant for a very long period of time. So we can, we can make our plans. And grow in that way. Uh, we'll mention, uh, and we will be, uh, receiving, uh, there will be more details about the incentive package that as they get finalized, each of you all will have meetings to learn about. And then ultimately, you will get to vote as a group on those incentives. Uh, they're, they're, uh, they're not gonna be near as pricey as I originally thought they were. For, for what that's worth, we, we thought this might be a, a more expensive transaction and it worked out very well for the city today. For, for what that's worth, we, we thought this might be a, a more expensive transaction and it worked out very well for the city today. In addition to their investment, as you heard Will today, Toyota's going to contribute three or four parcels of ground that they own inside the Lanes Run Business Park. They're going to deed those to the city. In addition, back when the council put this project in place, Toyota helped by paying one half of the land acquisition cost. And we learned that Toyota still had a balance in that account and that is the million dollars that Will referred to today, that they will contribute to us for real estate acquisition around the park. So we have some boundaries that we need to neaten up around the park. We also own pieces of a couple of parcels in the park. And because we only own pieces, there are restrictions on the farm and we can't remove the restrictions until we own it all. So we now have the funding to be able to move forward with that. And the other item was so that we can, we can upgrade our economic development efforts and make them more sophisticated in nature. We got a commitment for two hundred thousand dollars a year for every year that an incentive package is in place. That's expected to be ten years in this particular transaction, which is why Will referred to a two million dollar contribution for economic development. We were very specific in these negotiations on how this money would be used. And it, it is to be used for the economic development process. We've been real fortunate for a long time, Jack Connor is the gold standard. Once a prospect gets to Georgetown, there are, there's no one better. What we have not had the ability to do is do market research and target industries that we'd like to bring to Georgetown to achieve diversification and other things. With this kind of investment, we can begin to undertake those more sophisticated economic development steps that should give us a more diversified and robust economy. Will and I very directly talked about, Will wanted to know, okay, if, if we give you two hundred thousand dollars a year for economic development, does that mean you're going to quit spending money on economic development? And I told him that was not the case. The expectation is that currently the city and the county fund Scott United Economic Development to the tune of about eighty thousand dollars a year, eighty, ninety thousand dollars between city and county. And I've assured Toyota that we would continue to make that allocation so that our full economic development budget each year could be in the two eighty to three hundred thousand dollar range, which is probably where this price point really exists for a community of our activity. So more detail about the incentive package, but those are the bare bones of, of what we had discussed up until this point. Been a, a lot of discussion in the last little bit about community gardens and farmers markets. And Millie's been kind enough to do some of the front work on the community garden activity. I know there's a meeting, I think tomorrow at one thirty, Millie, for the participants in the community garden that Ms. Flint will have. And I think you're scheduled to meet with her as well. And our kind of plan was after Ms. Conway meets with the master gardeners at the extension office, then Robert Bruin and I will, will then sit down as well to see how we can best support this effort. Anything you'd like to add, Millie? Okay, good. And on the farmer's market, I think Ms. Flint will also talk with you about, they would like to expand their, their scale of their Saturday market back here. They've got a success problem and, and it really worked moving it from Friday to Saturday and putting it in the back lot. So they want to expand, I've asked them to make sure that we've got the public safety part of that worked out, chief, they may get with you. But the council had never specified how many spots they could have. And I figured council was very receptive to them having as big a farmer, farmer's market as they'd like. So that is unfolding as well. Robert, Stacy and myself had a, I thought a very productive meeting with the public works committee that I'll let the, the committee can talk about what, what we did. It was in, we had told the council that we wanted to meet with the committee to make sure that we could reconcile the numbers from the solid waste consultants report to our own general ledger accounts. They had given us a number on how much we would save if we left the commercial dumpster business. It was a huge number and we wanted to verify it. So Millie and Marvin went through this with Stacy. Oh, I've got one, thank you.
Mayor, well, she's passing it out, could I ask you to ask the farmer's market people if they would consider opening it at eight instead of nine?
Be glad to.
Thank you.
You like to do your shopping early.
They don't have a click list, so.
I'd be glad to. Yes ma'am.
Just what the mayor said, wanted to analyze this. I want you to look at the second page I gave you first, just to kind of set the framework. As a reminder, when the consultants analyzed the cost per route, they obviously didn't take, there's two people on this route, there's three people on this route. They looked at the overall service levels, how many households they serve, et cetera, and they've allocated a percentage of cost. So you can see kind of in this very middle column, how they've allocated our costs to the dumpster route. So they came up with what they told you was a test year, which is a sample year of all of our cost, which included not only sanitation staff, but as you know, sometimes we often have public work staff that are called upon to fill in, to drive garbage trucks. So that included part of that cost. So just wanted to remind you of how they do that process. So on the left-hand side of this, you will see straight from their report, these are the costs they had for the dumpster route, the commercial dumpster route. And it was two hundred sixty-five thousand, nine hundred four dollars in total. And they had income of approximately thirty-two thousand nine oh four. So I worked on mainly the staffing costs, Robert helped with everything else. But you can see what we did was we actually looked at, there are actually two individuals on that route. So while they allocated a percentage of staffing, we took the salary and benefit cost of just those two individuals that we know by name and exactly what they make. So the greatest difference in our cost is staffing because of how they did it. They did a percentage, we took the exact two people that are on that route on a daily basis. The other significant difference you'll see is on the landfill services and tipping fees. Again, they use a percentage and Robert actually went through the tickets for that particular truck for the landfill for a year. You know, he said, you know, is it possible that that truck was broken down today and another truck filled in? It's possible, so we could have missed a ticket or two that way, but it would not have been anything significant.
It would have been a lot. There, there would, could have been days that we missed a, you know, one ticket. Couldn't have been a lot, but it could have been some, but.
And then he took that tonnage times what we pay to the landfill for our tipping fees. So you can see it's sixty-four thousand difference and eighteen thousand dollars difference. That's the majority of our eighty-nine thousand dollars difference. Insurance, I worked on by taking the premium for that specific truck as well as a factor of our liability insurance in general. He looked at repair history on those vehicles, routine maintenance as where, as well as breakdown type maintenance, uniforms for two employees, motor fuel, he looked at the receipts again for that driver tied to that specific truck, uniform purchase for two employees, safety equipment, the dumpsters, you know, how often do we have to replace? We probably replace a couple of dumpsters per year on that route. And then the annualized truck, we were pretty close on that. What does it, you take the cost of that truck, which is around two hundred thousand, capitalize it over about seven years and that's approximately what it costs you per year for depreciation. The items in yellow are difficult to tie exact numbers to, but we did review the consultant's number and we felt that they were sufficient. They had a hundred, an example, they had a hundred twenty-two dollars for office supplies. We don't have exact invoices for that route, but they have a log book and they have some other things that happen throughout the year. So we felt that their allocations of the items in yellow were reasonable, but they were costs that were difficult to have invoices to actually write down. And then Robert just kind of did his own analysis on the customers, the paying, I said the paying customers that we have for commercial dumpsters, the thirty-five thousand, six forty-six. And out of that, he looked at the customers and the majority of that's schools.
Twenty-seven thousand, that comes from schools.
That was the thirty-five? So do you want to talk a little bit about the customer base and then?
Well, on the customer base, we have the schools, I'm thinking twelve. I can't, it's either twelve or thirteen schools, you got the elementary's that are in city limits, high schools, middle schools. Then you have, we have like four customers that are not either the water company, fire station, police station, parking reg.
One business out there.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's four businesses that are not a school or the city.
Is that it? That's, that's?
So what are, what's all this, what do we get? I mean, they're off, but they were off a ninety thousand dollars, that's good news, right?
Well, we're still losing money, that's what we're getting at.
Yeah, but it's not nearly as bad as we thought.
It's not as bad as we thought, but you know, the question is, do you want to subsidize the commercial dumpsters? Or do you want to put that money somewhere else? Cause that's what we're doing, we're, you know, losing money, so we got to pay for it somewhere.
So the ones that belong to the city, we would pick those up anyway? Or we'd be cheaper to?
Well, that's something we got to look at. You know, some of them that have dumpsters now, they may be able to hurt. You know, yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure there's some things we can do. And, you know, some of them, I don't even think we're getting paid for. I can't find what we're getting paid for.
That's a deal when you can get.
So, you know, what I'm saying, but.
That means we're getting what, eight dollars a month?
Well, yeah, they were, we, we've caught some, we've caught some things. We had one customer that was paying eight dollars a month for a dumpster.
Oh, for the big dumpster, oh wow, that was nice.
It was a deal.
Exactly, we, we just happened to luckily find that now. But, you know, it, it's a process of auditing all these things.
One thing we haven't mentioned is that we've been going through a very rigorous customer audit. Taking some time, but we identified a number of things.
Yeah, and the bottom line is, no, we're not, maybe not losing exactly how much because of how they allocate costs. But we are losing money, which means residential customers are subsidizing our business routes. And just due to the small customer base, is that something?
Yeah, that's, you know.
You got eight, 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 what about eight dumpsters besides the schools, something like that, about what we got?
We figured like anywhere between ten to eighteen.
But the majority of those being city or public.
Yeah, they, there was a number of thirty thrown out and I've tried to find them all and, you know, like I said.
So what, what Stacy and Robert, Stacy and Robert, and my question for the committee was, we verified savings, but it's at a slightly less amount because we knew that we weren't going to get rid of all the personnel costs the way the consultants may have. But the, the important question that the committee had to answer is, is this savings big enough to where we should still consider getting out of this business?
I think it is personally.
The only thing is, we don't make money on hardly any of our businesses. If you want to look at them as businesses, we don't make money at anything, do we?
No.
We definitely lose on this one.
But on a, on something that's a fee for service, we'd rather lose less.
Not lose it all.
Can we do the analysis just a little bit deeper? If we thought, there's so many of them that are city, that are cities, that we take that out, there's still going to be a number associated with it, right? If we're still going to use dumpsters that are city buildings, they're still.
Well, that's, that's something we have to, we have to discuss. Do we, do we let the city or, they're not all city, there's some government rent. If they want to, you know, continue to use dumpsters, which the water, the water company probably would on some things. But, you know, it may be cheaper for them to get dumpsters from a private company where, you know, we would save money. Might cost them a little more on what they're paying now, but in the end, it would save the city money totally. So we'd have to look at, yes.
Should we just phase it out then? You know, everybody, we're going to give them so many months.
We, Robert's already written a letter, not saying that we're definitively out of the business because we'll come to you all with an ordinance, but we did strongly suggest already in writing that they look for other, other options. And then we wanted to make sure that, that you all knew from the committee that, that there was a feeling that the cost savings were great enough to proceed and that we'll be working on a, on a solid waste ordinance to bring back to the council that would take care of this. Possibly a commercial Herbie matrix.
The interesting thing is that there's nothing in our ordinance about Herbie or about commercial dumpster collection. So we really couldn't take care of this, this particular issue with the ordinance. I mean, I, I think a, a simple MO from this council could resolve that issue, but we will be bringing back an ordinance that handles one, possibly two other issues.
It was more to make sure that the council knew that the committee and the administration are still working on this consultant's report trying to churn through the recommendations.
What would happen to the two positions that?
Well, the one, one of the, the guy that drives the truck now is slated to be on the public work side, but he hasn't, hasn't been on that site since I've been. Man, I, so we've got the, the third automated truck, so that has a little, less of it a little bit. But he would go to the public work side where he's supposed to be. And then the other position, I mean, I would hope to keep it, because we've got plenty of work to do. At time you figure in vacation and everything else coming up, you know, we, we've got plenty of work to do for Kyle, for signs preparing stormwater pipe and busting mole.
So if, if we didn't remove, eliminate those two positions, would we be hiring somebody else for the other work you're talking about?
Well, I haven't put in for that, but we would need that.
Cause if we don't, if we don't eliminate the positions, then we're not really saving the money.
Right, well, like I said, one of these positions, so half of this is already supposed to be on the public work side anyway. He's just been assigned San Tation since I've been there.
And, and one of the things we're going to look at with his budget discussion and coming up with the mayor is, we know that happens a lot where public works employees have to fill in and we're going to take a hard look at the staffing because that's one of the things the consultants mentioned was how much public work staff time was being spent on sanitation. We're going to look at that in a few days before we meet with the mayor to go over his budget to look at, okay, where are they funded out of? But what are they really doing on a daily basis to make sure we get that straightened out? And as well, if recycling is one of our goals in the future, while we may not completely save these costs, we could redirect them to a recycling.
Well, it's already obvious that we're spending a lot more than we're getting.
Yes, that, that's the bottom line.
We'd have to raise the rates five times in order to get our money back on, on dumpsters.
That's the bottom line, is the cost analysis versus the revenue.
We just thought it was a smart move and that, you know, we are, we are a city, but we also in business dumpsters right now, which we don't need to be in.
Not at the rates we're providing it for.
One of the things about, about the business dumpsters either, from what I could tell, you need to go mall a few times. And we're not doing nearly of what we got. A whole lot of businesses out there that we don't need to do.
Do, do we have an ordinance that says that anybody uses Herbies has to use the city's? Do, do we have an ordinance that says that anybody who uses Herbies has to use the city's services?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
For residential.
For residential, businesses can use somebody else if they want to?
Businesses are, are free to use commercial dumpsters.
What about Herbies?
I think on Herbies. That's right. So, either you have a comp, either you have a Herbie, or if you're commercial, you can have a dumpster.
I was at a business a couple of weeks ago, and I noticed that they had Rumpkey, Rumpkey Herbies. And I'm thinking, that's not supposed to be that way.
Well, they can still have Rumpkey.
Got an address?
I'll let you, I'll let you know who it is.
Andrew, you can still have your, if the business wants, they can have Rumpkey pick their garbage up.
Only if it's a commercial dumpster. I mean, that may be something we need to look at, but the, the wording of the ordinance is you, you're only allowed to have commercial dumpster service that is not part of the city.
We'll talk to them shop.
So.
I'm sure there's stuff out there that we haven't found yet.
Oh, yeah.
And then, Andrew also discussed with the committee the, uh, the overhaul plan, the, the steps that we'll be looking at through the rest of the summer and, uh.
Just a very high-level view, quickly sketched out of what needs to happen. And, and I don't know that there's a particular order, but I think it's kind of prioritized on the way things would need to come to council.
So, uh, I don't think there's a council action required at this time. It was more for information at this point about how we were working through that.
I have a question about the recycling as something that we're going to move forward with. Are we thinking about piloting another, uh, neighborhood to get it going, or just looking at the whole thing?
Look at the whole thing. Step one is we want to, we'd like to change our current operation to a single-stream operation, which is going to require that we contract with Lexington. And that will be necessary if we go forward with a large-scale recycling step. So, we're still in the exploratory step. We'd like to get, we think we can do our current recycling center activity cheaper by contracting with Lexington.
Okay, I had something I called you.
We, we want to evaluate that to make sure we're looking at these costs right before we do it on a bigger scale.
One thing about it, we can, we can never get the curbside recycling if we don't go single-stream. And we can't do that here. You know, so unless.
You've already talked Lexington, Robert goes.
I've got an email in, I sent another one today, trying to get, unless we can send our stuff there, then we can't do, we, we don't have the, I mean, it, it's a labor intensive to do it the way we do it. And we, we pay for fifteen hundred dollars a week, uh, in temporary help, just to, just to get, do what we do. Time you bill it all up and sort it, uh, and then send it off. We can save probably seventy thousand dollars a year just in temporary help.
Wow, okay, good enough.
But we can't, we can't do, we can't get the curbside the way we're doing it now. It's like, you know, of course, that's, that's down the road, but even if we didn't get, go to curbside and we just sent it like, we still save money. And you're still going to get recycling.
Okay.
As far as the customer is concerned, it's the same drop-off.
Yeah, same drop-off, it's just the way we do it over there. What we would do, if they would drop it off, uh, we would take it and put it in a truck, when the truck's full, we take it like. So, we don't have to do all that sorting, all that bailing, anything like that.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just two more quick mayor comments, and then we'll get on with the rest of the agenda. I got two great letters from, uh, a lady named Chrissy Upton, who is the president of the Kentucky Municipal Clerks Association. And I am delighted to report that Ms. Tracy Hoffman has received her certified municipal clerk designation from the International. International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Well, I, I, they should. And then, uh, just a day or two before that, uh, we got a letter from the same lady uh, indicating on behalf of the Kentucky Municipal Clerks Association Board, they wanted to congratulate Lori Razor for achieving her Kentucky Master Municipal Clerk designation.
Wow.
Our clerk's office is doing good.
Awesome.
That's right. Okay, uh, moving on into the, the meat of the agenda now. Andrew, uh, we have a municipal order approving a contract with NetGain for Disaster Recovery Services. As we evaluated these, we had three ranges of options. We didn't take the dirt-cheap one, that didn't protect us, and we did not go for the Cadillac. But we've taken the center range that we think gives us, uh, very good backup on a daily basis in two different locations, mirroring our servers, so we don't just get a data dump back, we get fully functioning processes back. That contract is in your packet, it's a fifteen thousand dollar one-time fee, and there is no annual fee beyond that. That, just straightforward enough?
It's a critical, um, network infrastructure project that will keep our operations up and running should a disaster happen. That's, the disaster recovery is designed to say, if you have a, a server failure, instead of it taking two weeks to get back online, it takes two hours. That's what this would accomplish. And it would happen both ways. It would take our data here at city and replicate it. It would take the data over where we house our finance software and our city work software and replicate it back over here. So, we have that redundancy, and then it's all backed up in the cloud over at NetGain. Very robust disaster recovery option.
I love the cloud.
Motion, thank you.
Second.
Second. Okay, uh, motion's been made and seconded on the NetGain Disaster Recovery Services MO. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Kyle, you've got two things that you'd like to purchase. I think, surprised you, I stopped talking.
I thought you'd tee me up, as usual. All right, we, um, sent out a RFP a little while ago for infrastructure services, namely, pipe inspection and cleaning for stormwater pipes. Briefly what Mike from Strand talked about earlier, a part of our asset management approach is to see what we have underground, see the condition that it's in, and also clean it out and improve the flow of stormwater in areas where we can. Um, this contract is a three-year contract with a possible two-year extension. Um, there's no lump sum, it's a unit price based per foot, and, um, the different prices are for different size of pipes, um, and that's in your, should be in your packet. And we will pay for it as we can within, within the stormwater budget.
The lump sum dollar amounts that we'll want you to consider will be a part of the budget presentation that we give you. Uh, but we, we did want to go ahead and accept this bid on a per-unit basis, and we'll buy as much as we can.
Need a motion, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion.
Thank you. Thank, thank you. Motion's been made and seconded on the Stormwater Infrastructure Services. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. And, uh, the other, uh, item is something we discussed with the council recently. Uh, the, the scariot proposal where we had to do some sewer line changes. Uh, we actually got those bids in, and they were, uh, they were slightly higher. Uh, you'll see in the MO that, uh, we, uh, including the stone materials, the total cost should be fifty-three thousand, five hundred forty-two dollars. We had asked the council to approve a budget of this project for thirty, thirty-five thousand, three hundred dollars. We recognize that this is more than the amount that we budgeted in the current amended budget, and Stacy and I have discussed that this thirteen thousand, four hundred and, two hundred and forty-two dollars will be a part of the budget amendment that we'll do at the end of the year. We think this is important to move forward with.
Need a motion, Mayor?
Please.
Motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Early. Uh, if there are any questions, no questions, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
If I'm not mistaken, that gets us down to number ten, doesn't it?
I apologize, it took ten minutes.
Ms. Shorter?
I'm good.
You're good. Chuck?
I'm good.
We got buzzards in town.
We do have buzzards in town.
I've had three or four people come in this office to talk about the buzzards in town. And a few years ago, I guess, back, back some years ago, we actually shot some.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, you have to get permission. Uh-huh, and then it kind of, it didn't thin them out, but I guess they thought this wasn't a nice place to be. So, but they're thick again, so the police department had to get it. And it was actually, at that time, it was Sergeant Better, but he's the one that was a sniper that shot them. And I think he accidentally shot a few more than ten, that's okay. So, anyway, we need to look at, I'm, I'm passing that back to you, Mayor. We need to look seriously about getting that permission again to, to.
Shoot the buzzard.
Shoot the buzzard.
Shoot the buzzard. You know, I remember years ago, we also used a big Sonic cannon.
It didn't do no, it didn't do any good, we tried that first.
You did try the, the big.
And it didn't do any good with it.
And after a few blasts, they just ignore you.
Yeah, so they're on people's roofs now, um, they were standing trees, but now they're on people's roofs and those claws are calling up their, their roofs. And they aren't, they're huge. Across to the funeral home the other morning, there was like three of them sitting on top of that, that house that was across there. They were sitting on top of the chimney, so they're everywhere.
And in two D R, I sit there waiting for me.
Yes.
Carry Millie away.
Why don't we check what the options are? I'm hoping we don't have to declare open season.
Yeah, I see, I see the, the first team's left her now, but anyway, see what you might do with the buzzards. What we can do.
Let's be sure and talk about buzzards. Anything else, Karen?
No, just at her, like, at, at her woods, at her lane, I mentioned that earlier. Next time it rains, some of the family members might drive up there and take a look at it.
Thank you. David? Martin? No? No? All right. Good. Meetings adjourned.
All right.